900 hours on December 10th. Meeting's called to order. Can we, I have you please join me in standing and doing a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for reflection.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this world for the liberation of the essence of the health of us for all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cook, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Stevens?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Okay, Teresa, glad you're there. We're gonna start out with public participation. I'm not gonna read through all this, but I would, I would ask that you read the rules and be civil and follow the quorum in the chamber, please. And I'll also ask, I have, I have a hearing issue. I was, I was in artillery, so I can't hear, so please move the mic. We're not gonna take any of your time from you. You'll get your three minutes, but pull the mic to your mouth so we can hear you speak. And also, if you're speaking in the early portion of the public comments, please reserve all comments for item, item, agenda items until that agenda item comes up. So with that, we're opening public participation. If you have something to say, please step forward.
Can this be about anything?
Yes, sir, other than what's on the agenda items at the time. You'll have time to speak during the agenda, agenda items.
May I speak?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Well, I have three minutes.
Sir, you can step up to the microphone. Please state your name and for the record.
Good morning, my name's Raymond Gunter. And point of reference, you say? What else should I state?
No, no, just, just your name and then you can speak on your subject, but if it's an agenda item.
Now I have two minutes and forty-nine seconds to speak about a problem that's been happening at my house since the year 2006. And what it is, there's a ravine next to the house that is a flood control ravine, and it's fifteen feet, they claim, off the road. And everybody and their grandmother likes to drive on my property, turn around or park there, and they're looking for something. And so they drive on the property and they tear up my whole front yard. So I put flower pots out there, and they've been there awhile now, and I received a notice. And the notice is, this got put on the door, this is actually my mother's house, and she's ninety-two years old. So this got stuck on the garage door rather than being put in the mailbox like normal mail, and she didn't even see it for about three days because the remote control opens the door. And it's a notice, hardly nothing can be read here, who, who wrote out what and what it's for or anything. It's not a normal document, not a normal legal document, but in any case, so I called in to check on it, and I'm watching my time, and they say I have to remove, I put flower pots along my, my property, and they're spaced exactly a foot and a half off the roadway. And, and what this did is, they're concerned about the flower pots now. They're on hangers, little metal hangers, and I'm wanting to leave them there because they look respectable to me, and it's probably a temporary situation. But he says there's no reprimand to the situation, nothing. I have to remove them, and the only option I have is, this is like the city's taking control of my front yard. The only option I have, he said, is to stick lollipop sticks, which the neighbor has across the street, to keep traffic off the property. And I'm not prone to turning my property into sticking, like, they look like lollipop sticks in the, on, on the, as a barrier. And these flower pots aren't bothering anything. They're just preventive to make sure people don't drive up on the property. And I've had trucks drive in there, I've had gullies made that are that deep, one foot deep, because it floods, and they drive in there anyway. But I got one second.
No, sir, Mr. Delorenzo, can you give Ms. Grossman to speak with this gentleman and see if we can resolve that issue? Thank you, sir. You'll see Ms. Grossman, she'll help you out.
See this woman here?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sure something will be done, I appreciate it.
We'll take care of it, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else for public comments?
Good morning. My name is Carrie Purdy. I was here last week talking about the aquatic facility. I just have some other things I would like to share with you. Our community currently has two swimming pools that are fifty years old, and as of today, a warm temperature of seventy-eight degrees, and we have no open community pool available for residents to enjoy. This highlights a critical need for Palm Coast to prioritize the kind of community resource and amenities we want to provide to our residents. As we look to the future, we must ask ourselves, do we want to emulate the growth and community investment seen in areas like Ponte Vedra or remain limited in amenities like Placa? A notable concern to this Flagler County is one of our five counties, is, is one of five counties in Florida without a fifty-meter pool. Additionally, while the YMCA is named Volusia Flagler, it has no, has, has not had a presence in our community for nearly a decade, and when it did, it was limited to a gym facility at the hospital. Reviving interest in establishing a YMCA or a robust city-county community center could provide significant benefits. These resources would serve as a hub for youth engagement, offering safe, productive after-school activities and reducing the potential for violence and harmful distractions for the kids. It would also provide a sanctuary where parents can bring their children to, to be mentored and to participate in programs promoting physical and social well-being. Investing in our modern aquatic facility and community center would not only enhance our community's amenities, but also foster a healthier, safer, and more connective environment for our families. Let's take the steps to make this vision a reality. I also would like to recommend you looking into, um, I'm sorry, applying for the community, what's the CDA, what's the, I can't think of the words, trying.
It's a grant program or something?
Well, for the county, the...
TDC?
Yes, thank you. The TDC money that, in helping to build this facility, will bring larger swim meets, water polo, master swim meets, synchronized swimming events that will come into the county to provide and stay in hotels, and these are weekend events that can be provided for the community, that people will come and be able to utilize those facilities and proper, all the aquatic activities that we could be able to provide. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public participation, and we'll move on to item E, presentations. Mr. Delorenzo, you got the one?
Mayor, City Council, as Mr. Delorenzo is getting his presentation ready, this was requested to be on this workshop's agenda. I believe we have brought you all up to speed about where we are in the process. Included in your agenda packet was the redline version of the most recent up-to-date ordinance, and Jason's here to review some of those changes.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councils, Jason Delorenzo, Chief of Staff. So as City Manager Johnson mentioned, this is an update from your previous two times you heard this. Also included in your backup is some of the process work that we've started. We have a checklist for an application in there, we have a Good Neighbor posting mock-up in there as well, and then the redlined ordinance. So I'm gonna go through the changes from the last meeting and look for some guidance as we move forward towards an ordinance. So some of the key points, we have an effective date of March the 3rd to start registering the short-term rentals. Registration is mandatory and renewed annually. There's a maximum of ten persons, not including children under the age of one, that was a recent change. Background checks are required for the renter. As you know, the ordinance includes required postings, in addition to the Good Neighbor posting that we produced, for parking noise, solid waste, the leash law, boating regulations, the name of the owner and the contact information. And then the ordinance, of course, includes enforcement and remedies. The first item that City Council asked us to look at last time was deleting the exemptions for onsite operators. In the last iteration, onsite operators were completely exempt from this ordinance. City Council preferred not to have that, so we deleted this language out of the ordinance. However, at the same time, City Council asked for us to look for possible exemptions for onsite managed properties. An onsite managed property is when the property owner remains in the home while the renters are there, just for clarification. So these are some options. If you chose to include some exemptions, you could pick one, all, or none of these. Background checks not being required, or parking regulations being consistent with the current code for residential properties. You'll remember that this ordinance has stricter parking than our standard ordinance for parking, and, or perhaps you'd like to have no maximum occupancy for an onsite managed property because the onsite manager could deal with the, you know, what might occur with having additional folks there. So we were, we were asked to kinda come back with some ideas. So this is the, some ideas about how to deal with onsite managed properties. So I'll pause if you have any thoughts about any of these.
Next, next slide. I don't have any, I don't have anything right now. We can, you wanna wait to discuss these at the end, after the presentation?
Okay, sir. We also deleted from the ordinance setting, that included exit lighting. We deleted the word, the words "of" primary exit. So emergency lighting is still required, but instead of having it be an expense of adding exit lighting, it's just temporary lighting. These are plugins, you can find them at your home improvement store in a multi-pack, they're not very expensive. If the power goes out or when it's dark, they illuminate, they illuminate the room or the floor, depending on how you have them set up. So a little less onerous. We added the language that the maximum occupancy doesn't include occupants under the age of one. And we also added the language referencing directly our leash law that we already have in existence. So those were the requested changes. Now I'm gonna move on to what the public will see once we get this process up and running. This is a mock-up of our code enforcement page on our website, where we would add a button for short-term rental complaints. When you do that, you would land on the page on the left where you would submit a violation, you'd put in the address, what the concern is. Of course, there would be our normal methods as well. You could always email code enforcement, call, call customer service, call a sheriff's office if it's after hours, or submit a Palm Coast Connect case. All those options would be available, but this would be a direct option. And then the public could also look for the violation, find out the status of by using the code violation search. And both of these are already existing, we didn't have to build anything new, so low-cost options here for managing short-term rentals. Then also, we'll include links to the Airbnb Help Center and the VRBO Property Concern pages, so you can, the public could submit a concern directly to those platforms with, you know, if there's continuous problems at a, at a certain location. As we move forward, it's our intention to bring the ordinance for first reading on December the 17th, next Tuesday, and then a second reading, did I say second, a first reading on December the 17th, a second reading on January the 7th, which would also include the fee resolution with an understanding that council would like this program to be cost recovery. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, let's open this item up for discussion among the council. Does anyone have anything?
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I was, I'd like to suggest that at a minimum, we should not remove the background check requirement as an exemption. I think that's something important for public safety, to ensure that people coming here, you know, are good people, taking part in our city.
I would agree with that. Anyone else? Anyone else have, have any issues?
I do, Mayor, I just didn't want to cut anybody else off that was there in person, and thank you for accommodating. I'm very sick, so I appreciate you all allowing me to appear virtually today. So I've had a lot of communication with our C-section group, the CCC, the Coalition, and I think one of the, the big concerns that they have expressed to me is the daytime noise. It sounds kind of odd, right? But there's a lot of daytime noise that's coming from these, from these rentals because people are there on vacation. And while it may not seem like it's something that we should regulate because it's not during quiet hours, they are concerned because it's disrupting their enjoyment of their home. You have people that are there for bachelor parties, birthday parties, you know, things where there's a lot of loud music, some of it obscene, and a lot of times, it's coming over the water. And I don't know if anybody lives on any water, but you can hear everything on those canals. So I know that we had spoken with code enforcement previously, excuse me, about carrying decimal readers, I think, and City Manager, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we have made a policy where the code enforcement offers, officers are to carry decimal readers so that they can better enforce the daytime noise and the nighttime noise as well. But in the, in the postings inside the property, I think it's really important that we make it very clear that nighttime noise is not the only concern, that these folks are, one, inside a residential community, and they need to be respectful of their neighbors, of the neighboring properties with regards to noise at all hours of the day. And then, two, I know a really big concern for these folks that I agree with is the way that these homes are advertised. I don't think it's very clear to people who are renting these properties that they're renting a property within a residential neighborhood. It seems like it would be common sense to us, but it needs to be advertised in the STR owners' advertisement of the property, that, that this, their specific property is in a residential neighborhood. That way, when people are renting, they know that. Those are my, those are my two big concerns. I, I will just say that I think that this is a great first step, and I think that we need to move forward. I'm hoping I can get consensus from the council on those items. I want to move forward with an ordinance, but I, I, I do think that this is still going to be a working progress, because I agree with a lot of people in that we should look into a private enforcement company, a third-party company that enforces these STRs rather than code enforcement. The reason for that is a lot of our residents have made complaints, have contacted the property managers on the property, all of these things, and they've, they've incurred retribution for it. There's been retaliation, there's people who have been cussed out. You know, you're, you're talking about folks who are in their neighborhood complaining about what essentially is a business. So they've incurred a lot of backlash for that, which should never happen. And because with code enforcement, you have to give your personal information, that's what is occurring. So these people are discouraged from making complaints, which should never happen. So I would just suggest that we move forward with this ordinance, but that we consider a private enforcement company in the future.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Commander Finn, can you step up for a second, please? And this is, this is concerning daytime noise. What, what does the Sheriff's Department? I remember one time, we had a vacation rental right behind our house moving, just before we moved, and they're out there at like nine AM on a Sunday morning, blaring their music, and, and I called the Sheriff's Department, and they came out, and the deputy took care of it. So what is our enforcement mechanism in cases like that during daytime noise?
The Sheriff's Office does have a certified decimal meter that we use for those type of violations.
So if, if, for the people of the city, if someone is disturbing your peace at nine AM on a Sunday morning and the music's too loud, you are, you can call the Sheriff's Department, and they will enforce the standard, right?
If, if the noise level exceeds the level for, you know, for the ordinance, yes.
And it, and it's pretty obvious if you're on, on the other side of the canal and you can hear music that's like it's in your living room, they're gonna enforce it, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. My biggest concern is that I brought up to the staff, Mr. Delorenzo and Lauren yesterday, was paying, making, within the bounds of state law and federal law, making sure that they pay, and we have a mechanism as far as we're gonna do that calculation on how much we need to, to charge in our fees to cover our staff, right, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're working on that, okay. No homestead exempt properties can be used other than for in-home operators, right?
That's a different agency, but yes.
Okay. And the other, another thing is existing ordinances. I want our code enforcement to be able to enforce, enforce existing ordinance, and what you're saying is ours goes a little further as far as parking vehicles, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And also, my biggest concern is make sure everything that we do in this ordinance is equal protection to all citizens. Okay, so across the board, so in, in the, as far as the, the background exemption for in-home, just like Ty said, we, it should be across the board, in-home and independent owners operating on their own. Same thing as far as the max occupancy, I think. It should be both in-home operators and regular operators. So, and strict enforcement, my, my biggest concern is, like with, within one hour, if I have a, if I have a complaint on a house, and this is working with the Sheriff's Department also as far as enforcing our ordinance, so if I call, if I call, if I call the owner and then the Sheriff's Department, within one hour, somebody should be there to correct the problem onsite, correct?
Yeah, so the ordinance says that the operator, the designee, has to respond within two hours, that's how it's currently written. Now, I mean, level of service for the Sheriff's Department, I can't control.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I'm sorry, I may have skipped over you guys, I'm sorry, Charlie, Ray, you got anything?
No, I, I think, due fairness, it should be across the board.
Yeah.
You know, concerning background checks, et cetera.
Equal protection under, under the law for everyone, it doesn't matter what, you know, what type of operator. And I know we went through that as far as, when we were doing the solicitation badges as far as felonies and stuff like that, and Charlie, you know, like, I had an installation, federal installations, as far as felony convictions, you could not come on my installation at all if you had a felony conviction within the, the last ten years. And also, that, that applied also to sex offenders. Sex offenders were not allowed at all, it didn't matter when they committed that felony. So we don't want felons and sexual predators in our short-term rentals and, within the city. So any other, any other discussion amongst the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question for Jason. We had talked, and I can't recall exactly what it was, but there was possibly a change to the posting inside the house that was requested. What was that?
Yes, we have an email from the Canal Coalition that would like to have some specific language related to boating. Seems like a good idea, we can update the language in our Good Neighbor posting.
So it's just information regarding the existing boating rules?
Correct.
For the, for the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm fine with that as well.
Yeah, I think all the, all the documentation should be in the short-term rental with all state, all state laws, county, city laws, and they should be strictly enforced. Any, any more discussion among the council? We'll open, we'll open this agenda item to public comment, so if you're here concerning short-term rentals, please step forward. And I hope we're getting to what you want. State your name.
Good morning, Eric Johnston. How's everybody doing this morning?
Good.
Good, thank you. Good, all right. Yeah, I've got a pretty straightforward solution, first of all, to the noise ordinances and recommendations, the required postings. I tell you, I think we really only need to add one single sentence at the beginning that says, "We have daytime and evening noise limits," which is true as per thirty-five fifty-three, or fifty-three thirty-five, I don't know for sure. But if we say that we have daytime and evening noise limits, that lets them know right up front, it's all day and all night. After that, we can say quiet time is ten to seven. That's great, that means be even quieter overnight. Final sentence on the welcome letter, yeah, we should change, be respectful of quiet time to be respectful of noise regulations. That would give the renters the understanding that we expect them to be quiet all of the time, which is what as neighbors we do.
Within reason.
Within reason, absolutely. Everybody's entitled to have a good time, but sometimes it does get out of hand. With that would come a change to seventeen seventy-two, item G, and again, we should be telling them that they should provide notice that daytime and evening noise limits should be observed. So I don't think that'll cause any legal problems. It clearly states things that are already in place, it's just a little difference in the way of wording it, where we're saying, hey, we expect you to be quiet during the day, too, you know, you're gonna have fun, sure, but it's not anything goes. When we say quiet hours, it means that everything else is not quiet hours. Also regarding the welcome letter, there was nothing about boating. We definitely should let them know that all of the canals in Palm Coast are speed-limited. There's also, you know, no wake zones by Marina, as well as the manatee zone that surrounds the Marina, and those are things that we should definitely be adding in there. Another thing I saw on the occupancy, we just tell them, number of occupants and rentals is limited to ten people. I don't think that's specific enough, kinda sounds like if I have a two-bedroom home, I can have ten people in there. I realize it's just a welcome letter, and it's a little more defined in the ordinance, but that's definitely something that we need to clarify a little bit for people. And one other thing that I had mentioned previously, and I didn't find in here, was that owners should be expected to maintain a residential character to their properties. We don't want anybody decorating or building something that looks like a hotel.
Existing ordinance.
Existing ordinance as far as landscaping. Exactly.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Davidson. I have Airbnb in the B section by the library. I have Airbnb in the B section by the library. And my biggest issue is regarding the background checks. Airbnb already does their background checks, so they already provide that. They check for sex offenders and all that. So the last people that were up there, they suggested that we just have the Airbnb.
Excuse me, ma'am. Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen. Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You know, sign a document that says that they're responsible for the other people in the party. That's typically fine, we could do that. So that the person renting is responsible, that if somebody else was a sex offender in the party, then they'd be legally liable. That's technically fine, we could do that. But Airbnb does background checks already, so it's not necessary to do background checks. Little properties like mine, I don't already, I don't profit on mine as it is. So I can't afford to do background checks on everyone. That would also eliminate the same-day rentals. That would eliminate 24-hour rentals because we wouldn't have time to do background checks. So we would have to say no to those reservations, which is the primary of my business. I get the most of mine are one-nighters, same-day rentals. So I wouldn't be able, the majority, 90% of my business would be gone if I had to do background checks, which is just completely unnecessary. The other thing would be that the biggest complaints around town is the, like they said, noise, trash, and all that other stuff. For me being an in-county, in-city Airbnb host, I'm available 24/7 to my guests and my neighbors. So if there's ever a problem, all they do is call me and I'm right there. And so we need on-call management for all these out-of-state properties, all these corporations that are buying up the houses and renting them out their Airbnb is completely unacceptable. We need on-call management to be available for all of these. So like the property managers, they need to be liable to going over there whenever there's a problem so that they can resolve those issues. Out-of-state owners need to be liable for that stuff. Instead of punishing us who are in-state, who are in-city, they need to have more restricted rules. And I think that's pretty much my biggest things. I had more, but I've said it to all the other people, so I don't remember now. But those are my biggest things.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Hi there, I'm Kathy Davidson. I have an Airbnb out of our home. I am an in-resident. I live in my home with my Airbnb. We have a six-bedroom house. We rent out five of our rooms. Airbnb allows us the privilege of being able to be able to pay our bills and pay our mortgage payment, to be able to live in our house. We're grateful for that. We take care of our lawn, we do everything that we're supposed to do. We pay our bills, we pay our taxes, the whole nine yards. The front of our house, we can fit 10 cars in the front of our house because we have five rooms, one lane for every single car that is there. It takes care of everything. So your decisions affect whether we are able to pay our mortgage payment. As far as the background checks, as our daughter just said, Airbnb does that. We have lost, and I'm grateful, reservations where Airbnb has canceled reservations because of background checks that were not good. So we shouldn't be forced for the same-day rentals to have to do these background checks. There is no time to do that. That would limit our income and limit whether we can pay our mortgage payment or not. We are very proud owners of an Airbnb. We take very good care. We are onsite if there's issues. When people come to our home, I tell them, "We live in a nice neighborhood and I want to keep it that way. Our neighbors like us. You will leave, but we stay." So I require them to keep the noise down, I require them after 10 o'clock at night, we need to be respectful of everybody. We require the music to be down, we require certain music cannot be played, no cussing and things like that going on. We're very respectful with that, and I would like to just keep it that way if everybody could. When you make your decisions, think about the little people. We happen to be the little people that are there. You know, we just hired a president that wants to deregulate, and yet we're talking about regulating more and more for us little people. We don't need more regulation for us little people. We take good care of what we're doing and we follow the rules. And so we have a few bad actors that are going to affect us little people. And I think that's just flat-out wrong. I think there should be a system where if you're going to follow the rules, you're here. If you're not going to follow the rules, there are other stuff that you're going to have to go through or have happen if you're not going to follow those. We happen to follow all the rules. Bad guests create bad reviews, and bad reviews do not get people to stay at your home. Ours is 4.8. We're proud to be super hosts. We've been super hosts for over nine years from the get-go. And I'm proud to say I do good that. So we want to encourage people to do right and not punish those who are doing right and were doing right. And please take that all into consideration when you make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Mike Soler from the C-section. I've got a couple of things. One thing is that Governor DeSantis might be leaving, and he's the one that kind of helped us out with vetoing that bill that was going to come through that would take all the, well, we didn't have any control, but keep our control away from us. Now that we have some control, I would like to see that some of these rules that we're trying to get put in place be put in place before he leaves because we don't know the idea of the next person that would take his place, what kind of ideas they would have. Also, I'm all for the management company that would be the person that we would, or the company we would call if we have issues. Because the way society is right now, you call something on the most simplest thing and they want to shoot you or whatever. These people sometimes might be staying for a couple of days. You call in on them, well, they're going to shoot your windows out or throw a brick through your car window or something because they're leaving. So I think it'd be better to do that instead of having to give your name and address and all that to the...
To the city.
City, thank you. And also, another issue I'm seeing is that a lot of people, you know, are backing their cars in. That stops the police when they drive down the street and stuff to get the person's background and all that. It'd be nice, I can understand, if they unload the car, then pull the car back out and put it in where the license is accessible to be seen. And I think that was all I really had. So thank you all, and I hope we can work something out where it works for everybody.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Joel Davison, nice to meet you all. And wanted to encourage with the background checks because I know Mayor Yarp knew we did vote for you, by the way, at Lisa's recommendation. But the background checks are so very, very important not to be done by us as individual homeowners, like my wife and daughter said. And we're representing probably 300 homeowners in Airbnb. They don't know this meeting is going on or they'd all be here. We didn't call everybody, we're not that type of people. We didn't want to come in here and have a huge crowd of people. And so we're speaking probably for all of them. The maximum occupancy, we do have the five bedrooms we rent. So to have 10 people in a two- or three-bedroom home, 10 people in a five-bedroom home, we don't get that many large groups. We've had, in nine years, we've had probably 20, maybe two a year, groups of 15, 16 people. These are sporting teams, these are wedding groups, these are family reunions, and these are nice people. Now, because we live there, there's no wild parties. And the C-section sounds like they have a serious issue with people having wild parties and things. So yes, you may consider doing rules just for the C-section and just let the rest of Palm Coast. There is not a problem in the rest of Palm Coast to speak of. The, oh my goodness, excuse me. So with the advertising, we need to be able to say that we can take up to 16 people in a six-bedroom home and five-bedroom home. We've got a living room and a family room and all that stuff. Florida Department of Revenue certificate, yeah, we don't have to do that with Airbnb. Airbnb does take care of that, and of course, the final page says that. The background checks are so darn important to not require that to be done. The Bike Week, there should be a, eliminate an option during Bike Week where it's okay for people to park their trailers. People don't usually drive their motorcycle to Bike Week, they usually tow them, then they leave the trailer in the driveway and they take their bikes to go for Bike Week. We should be able to continue to do that. That is our biggest week of the year. It is the highest cost of income to our family is Bike Week. And telling people that they can't bring their trailer or they got to go pay to park it somewhere would just not be right for the simple stuff that we do. Sexual offenders, sexual predators, again, there's 50 that live within a five-mile range of where we're standing right now. Do we do a sex background check for everybody that walks through the door of city council? No, of course not. And there are sexual predators that haven't been caught yet. So, you know, again, it's just kind of crazy to expect us to do that. And it would be impossible with people, probably 60% of our business are that day, that day they rent and that night they're there. And, sorry, just one question, if I could clarify, properties with more than four units under the same roof and are collectively owned do not have to register? Would that be us? We have a property with five units, five rooms, under the same roof, we own them altogether, that we don't have to even register for the short-term rental license? And I just need clarification on that. And a sample rental agreement? We don't do rental agreements. It's all through Airbnb, it's all through, ours is all through Airbnb, 100% through Airbnb. And they do take care of problems. It's a very self-cleansing situation. If we get bad reviews, nobody's going to stay at our home. When guests get bad reviews, we're not going to rent to them, nobody's going to rent to them. So as soon as somebody gets two bad reviews, they're out. They're not going to get an Airbnb rental because they've had two bad reviews and they're done, nobody will rent to them. Thank you very much for giving me a few extra seconds.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Morning, Mark Stansel. It's nice that Airbnb does that background stuff, but not everybody rents their house in Palm Coast through Airbnb, so maybe it's a good thing to do. I don't know how it to be managed. But the reason I'm here is not all the homeowners that rent out their houses really care about whether people make noise or not. Some of them are out of state, they don't care. So code enforcement comes by, gives them a warning. Two days later, the people are gone. Oh, problem corrected. Next month, people come in, make noise, parked their cars wrong, get a warning. Oh, they're gone. Problem corrected. Doesn't solve the problem. The owner needs to know that there's consequences to letting people do that. There's ways to do that. So if they sign an application and a rental agreement, if the code enforcement had a special clause, like rental property procedures, and had specific violations that the owner knows will happen to them if they allow these people to come and then just forget about it. Like, for example, first violation, sent to the owner knowing that their people that they let sit in their house violated the city code. That's a warning, okay? Next time somebody does that, they get another violation, they're going to get a fine. Not another warning, they've already got a warning. Get a fine. You know, city determines what that fine is. Third violation, okay, so they obviously not paying attention. Third violation, suspend their rental property for 30 days so they can't make any of their precious money. And if they ignore that. Fourth violation, suspend their permit. That'll solve the problem. All you got to do is put that in the thing that they sign, knowing that these are the things that can happen to them if they don't pay attention to their property. Okay? And of course, you have to add that to the code enforcement policies, standard operating procedures for rental property. Usually just suggestions that maybe we ought to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good morning, Ma'am Norris and the rest of the council. My name is Quinn Creasy. I come from the CCC. I want to just stress a few issues. So Little Red Riding Hood has a dilemma. Her grandmother is locked in the cupboard and the wolf is cozy in bed. And who should Little Red Riding Hood call? Should it be the wolves? I think seeing advertising for Airbnb and Verbo on the city site is kind of like that situation. Airbnb has actually lost a lot of market share this year in 2024. And so the fact that Airbnb does some background checks on some people is, I think, quite irrelevant. Airbnb actually does not, we've researched this extensively, does not do comprehensive background checks on all the people that rent. I think all of us who have used Airbnb ourselves know that. So that's just one issue that I want to address. The daytime noise can seem like such an insignificant issue to people who don't have to deal with it every day. But we had a neighbor who had been a combat veteran, an elderly man, he was dying of cancer. We didn't know about this. He was six feet, seven feet, eight feet from a raucous party happening through the day, through the night. The types of parties we have in C-sections are cute little five-year-old birthday parties with seventeen screaming children. It sounds very cute. Oh, let the children swim and play in the pool. But if you have a job and you're working from home, as many of us do and many are at home at the moment doing that, having screaming masses of children, or frat parties, or whatever you do before you go and get married parties, and, you know, quinceañeras, and just the list goes on. We are experiencing such anxiety as we plan events in our homes, hoping to host a nice, quiet Christmas, and we don't know what party is coming across the canal. We can hear the words. I think that 0% of our members have had success in contacting Airbnb's line and having any helpful response. We are so grateful to the Sheriff's Office. They really deal with things so well after 10 o'clock. I think it's unusual, and I don't have time to tell experiences now, but I don't think it's right that they have to address things in the day, and so far, we haven't had the experience that they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Julia Connolly, also with the C-section group. I just have a couple of questions about how the city will handle repeated ordinance violations. I believe that according to the state law, we can't prohibit these, the short-term rentals from people having short-term rentals. So I don't know what the plan is if you have one that's a problem, if it goes, does it have to go on for a year and then the city revisit? The other thing is, how will the city verify that the background checks have been done? What is the mechanism and how that works? As Quinn said, that if you look on the two most popular rental websites, VRBO and Airbnb, VRBO says they just don't look at criminal records and Airbnb says that they only do them intermittently, and that only applies to US-based renters. If they're overseas, they don't have a way to do that. So just curious on how the background check verification will work? And does it only come to light when there has been a serious incident, like maybe a sexual predator is casing the neighborhood for, you know, children that live in the area or that? So those are my questions, and I thank you for considering us.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comments? If not, I'll close public comments now and come back to the dais. Mr. Delorenzo, that's a couple of, let's try to see if we can run this to ground real quick. Background checks, have we verified that Airbnb and all these other outlets that service these people? Do they do background checks? And is there a way that we can follow up to make sure that they're done? Because I'm saying if you're going through a third party and they're saying they're doing the background checks, and we don't want to charge, make our residents have to do them independently, what is our mechanism for that? How are we going to fix this issue?
Mayor, it is our understanding that the booking platforms, as part of your terms of service to use them, you allow a background check to be performed on you, and that's for the operator and for the renter. We were contacted by a representative from Airbnb when we first started this conversation, and they indicated that was the case. They described that to us. So that is... They described that to us. So we, that is our understanding that that's how that works.
Okay, so, um, if the third-party vendor are doing background checks, we're not going to require our Airbnb people to do them, correct?
That is not how the ordinance is currently written.
Okay.
That, that, uh, city council previously discussed that and did not, uh, add that into the ordinance. Right now, it would be the responsibility of the property owner to perform the background check. And to answer, while we're talking about background checks, to answer this question, um, by affidavit, you are, the, um, operator, when they apply, um, is acknowledging that they know that they have to perform a background check on, uh, everyone.
Okay.
Every renter, not every occupant, every renter.
Okay. So does that, does that answer the question about if they have to do it themselves or the third? That's in the ordinance, right?
That, that is not currently in the ordinance. Right now, it's the property owner's responsibility to perform the background check. It, and it does not rely on the booking platform to, um, to perform the background check.
Okay, so what's the solution, especially for the overseas clientele? I, I never, I didn't think about that. So what's the solution? How should we go about it?
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I, uh, am in favor of not charging or forcing, um, a resident to do a secondary background check if one's already completed. My only reservation is the extent of that background check from third parties. Um, and then how, how do we ensure that that's occurring? How do they, uh, produce that document to us? Or is there an affidavit they would have to, to sign to say that, you know, they had a background check? Um, so, so that's kind of my only reservations with that. I'm not in favor of, if there's already one done, forcing residents to then have to have a second one. Uh, but I want to ensure that a correct one has been done and we have, uh, evidence or proof of that.
Yeah, if it's going, if, if they're saying they're doing them, um, even, even if you pay, if you pay for a background check, um, a lot of time, unless you've, you, you have experience, maybe Commander Finn can say this, unless you have experience with NCIC and going through and checking people's background, you wouldn't know what you're looking at anyway, would you, Commander Finn? You wouldn't know what you're looking at? If you weren't experienced with NCIC, the background system, we have an estate. Yeah, it, it can be quite confusing because you can have people pop up, uh, with the same name, like me. I was detained one time coming off of a cruise for some other dude with my exact same name. And it, and it wasn't me. I was an active-duty military officer at the time. I didn't do anything. So I just want to have those mechanisms in there. So see what you can do with that to make sure we're doing the right thing. I, I don't want, I don't want our residents that, that especially in-home, uh, Airbnbs, they have to pay $50, $60 to run a background check that they probably wouldn't understand anyway if they looked at it.
Yeah, Mayor, um, we're currently paying $64.50 for a background check?
Yeah.
That's the price that, um, Barbara said is our cost for, um, performing those as part of some of the other operations we do. Mayor, I'm not sure I heard a consensus to make that change in the ordinance.
Yeah, we get consensus to, to iron that out?
If I may, Mayor, um...
Oh, I forgot, Teresa, you're the lawyer. Let's have your input.
Okay. Um, my suggestion, I'm with you and I, I kind of voiced this before. You know, I have some concerns about Airbnb's policy with regards to their background check, but I do think they do a robust background check. And as a prior Airbnb owner, I can tell you, um, that their, their background check is, check is pretty robust. And I, and I actually do think it probably might be better in some regards than what we were previously looking at for the ordinance. So I think that there should be some language written in that states that a background check is required unless, um, the owner is willing to certify under oath that the platform that they use already conducts a background check at the level or a superior level than what the city is requiring. And then to Councilman, um, Miller's point, if they sign an affidavit as a part of their registration package to that, I think that that should be sufficient. Um, and if I may, just really quickly, since I am remote here and it's kind of hard to, um, jump in in a timely fashion, on the, um, on the noise, the daytime noise issue, I do think that that notice that we have posted inside of the residence, if we could get consensus that it should mention, um, the daytime noise issue, um, that we should address that. I, I did also too, on the ordinance itself, there are a few, um, there's one really important typo that I want to address, um, where we say that the maximum occupancy is limited to 10. Um, I think it's on page 27 or 29. We changed the actual, um, numeral from, from 12 to 10, but we didn't change the, the written number. So in the ordinance itself, Jason, there's a typo. We need to make sure that those match up, that they both say 10 because right now one says 12 and the other says 10. And that's in the language of the ordinance itself.
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you. We, um, we made that, uh, Mark says aware and we'll have it fixed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, so just to point out, right now, it currently, the ordinance is written is that the, whoever is applying to get the application to be a short-term rental in Palm Coast has to certify that a background check was done.
Yes.
If it's the direction of this council, what we can do is saying that they can also certify it was done through Airbnb or Ver- Verbo, something like that, that it was already completed. That way, that we're kind of killing two birds with one stone. If that's, uh, what the, this council would like to direct.
Everyone, everyone, everyone's happy with, okay, we have consent on that, Ms., Ms. Cook. So, um, the other, the other question, and Teresa mentioned it about the occupancy, as, as the lady mentioned about them having a, a large house. Um, so if you have a, a room, you have six rooms, you say two, 12 people, that's not counting infants and toddlers, you know, so that may be three people per room. Um, it's written now, max occupancy is 10. I think it should be based on, on room number, two, two persons per room.
Yes, Mayor.
Excluding infants and toddlers.
The, the ordinance is written in that way. It's two persons per habitable, habitable space with a maximum of 10, not including children under the age of one.
Okay, I, I think it should be based on two persons per bedroom.
This is another one where city council has gone back and forth. We originally proposed, uh, 12, um, but city council backed it down to 10 in one of the previous meetings.
I think that was Teresa's recommendation for Ken.
And I, and I'm going to stick by that, Mayor. I, I think that it's really important. 10 people is a lot of people. And I also, as, you know, being part of this community, um, I can tell you, my, I'll tell you my, my, my very large fear here, when we start to cut out certain things and say, oh, well, these people have a, a six-bedroom house, so let's increase it to 12. A system that allows for certain things will always be abused. And so my concern is that if we don't put an absolute cap on 10, um, we will see certain properties, not all of them, but there always will be, be people who abuse the system. We will, and I'm not saying that the people in the room are those folks. I, I just know from, again, from being in this community, we will all of a sudden see people say, oh, well, no, I do have this extra habitable space. And they'll try to create efficiencies and things like that. I just think that putting a cap on 10 is the way we should, is the way we should move forward. There was very broad public support for 10. I feel, um, it's unfortunate that for the folks that maybe have, um, larger homes, which I know that they're pretty limited, um, in our community now, that can fit 12 people or more. But again, if you start to, if you start to just say two people per habitable space, then it gets into this, well, what's a habitable si- space? And although we have defined it, it's still malleable. And I, so I think that we need to put a hard line. 10 is a lot of people. That is a lot of people. We have to take a step back and look at the fact that you're allowing 10 people to rent a residential property that is flanked on both sides, front and back. So four sides with other residents. And you're allowing up to 10 people to rent that property, not including babies. So to me, 10 is a lot. 10 is a very hard line. Let's not get into this whole two people per habitable space just because we have a few properties right now that have technical six bedrooms because I think you just allow too much, um, that's up for interpretation and too much subjectivity. 10 is a lot. Um, we have accommodated, I think, with regards specifically to the lighting changes that we made, the lighting requirement changes that we made and also to the background changes that we've made. We have accommodated, um, both sides here. And I, I just think that we need to stick with 10 because again, we're looking at a residential property that likely on one side has two people, four people on the other side, an elderly couple. I mean, really, 10 is a lot. And so I'm going to, I stick very hard on my stance that 10 should be the max.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. So we have consensus that will remain for 10, max occupancy?
Yeah, I agree. I think that, um, you know, when we talk about the, the trouble groups that come in, it's anecdotally, my thoughts are those are the larger groups. So limiting that in some way to, to a cap is a good thing in my eyes.
Okay, so we'll stay with 10? Everybody agree? Okay. Uh, the next question, uh, Mr. De Lorenzo and Barbara, is, um, enforcing repeat offenders. That's, that's a, that's a big sticky point is enforcing repeat offenders.
As per the Florida statute 162, the ultimate responsible party is the property owner. So even if you have, uh, a renter on your property, even if you had it in long-term like we do now, the rentor, the renter is not the one that's coming to code board, he's the property owner. It's just like in our ordinance right now, when we do post a property and we do mail, send certified and regular mail, we're also contacting the property manager. All right? So the owner is being notified, the property owner is being notified and the renter is being notified. In the case of short-term rentals, they're going to be gone, but they're still going to be coming through a due process as per the state. And so if we have, um, recurring or repeat, then of course, when we go to look at their, um, renewal, uh, for their short-term resit- um, registration, that could be grounds for revoking.
Okay. So we just, as long as we have that enforcement mechanism to, to cut that out if it's, gets to be a real problem. Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, just wanted to go back to, we talked about adding the boating rules to the, the sign as well as daytime noise. Uh, I don't think we actually discussed to see if we had consensus. I think we do.
Do we have consensus as far as boating regulations being posted into short-term rentals? I do. Teresa, you're good with that?
Just, just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. It does say in the ordinance that they have to buy by all nighttime and daytime rules along with federal Florida statute and local rules.
Okay.
But we'll, we'd be happy to add those things to the, um, required postings.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want to make it, make sure that it's, um, equal protection for everyone and we're doing the right thing by our citizens.
Mayor, I heard one other question that wasn't addressed, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, that was, um, properties with four units or more. That would be four dwelling units, not four rooms or more. So, uh, that would be like a condominium.
Okay. All right.
I, I, I'd like to, point of clarification. When, 10 people, uh, the maximum amount of people on a rental, um, and you do one background check. Is that correct?
On the person that is actually renting the house.
What about the 10 other people? See, that's not foolproof. And as far as NCIC is concerned, uh, you can have people with the same name, same date of birth. The only sure way to determine whether or not somebody actually has a criminal record is through fingerprints. And that you can't do in one day. Uh, they, they have to send them up digitally, uh, to Tallahassee and they'll tell you, they'll make a match. So, uh, the people that have only one-day rentals are not going to be able to get a background check that's worth anything. Uh, and that, that, that's my concern. And I think that, and in all of these boating rules and the rules, uh, of the road, so to speak, at the house, should, when they rent, or this B&amp;B should have a package, should have a, a brochure, say, this is your inner residential neighborhood. This is the boating rules. These are, you know, the noise ordinances. So people are forewarned and, uh, they are aware, uh, of what is required of them.
Yes, the, the ordinance lays out, uh, Councilmember, the ordinance lays out all the required postings that have to be in, inside the home. And the location.
Well, I don't know. It, it would make more sense to me if whoever's renting this gave this to the, to the prospective renters beforehand. Excuse me. So, you know, maybe they won't rent when they find out that there are all of these rules. And, uh, instead of having them sign a contract, go through a background search and then find out what the rules are. And I, I, it's preemptive. Just a suggestion.
Uh, when they...
Mayor, if I may, I, I, I have a, um, suggestion because I agree with, um, Councilman Stevens on that. Perhaps whatever we decide we're going to post inside of the rentals. So we've talked about, you know, adding the boating language per Councilman Miller. We've talked about the daytime noise. I think that what we should require, because, excuse me, on all of these platforms, when you, when you advertise, you do list your household rules and you have the ability to add, delete. The owners have a lot of, um, leeway with regards to what they can add. I think that it should be a requirement that whatever we decide is in that posting should also be listed in the household rules on the rental. That way, the owner, to Councilman Stevens' point, um, or I'm sorry, the renter, will know exactly what those rules are prior to deciding to rent. Um, and additionally, uh, I, I also wanted to make sure we have consensus on, uh, making sure that in the advertisement for the property, it does state that we, that the property is in a residential neighborhood.
Can you answer that, Jason?
I'm sorry, yes, I can, but, um, Vice Mayor, we couldn't hear the end of your statement.
I just wanted to make sure that we also have consensus, um, because I, I didn't hear that we got that, um, to, to make sure that the, the, in the property, um, advertisement, it does state that it's in a residential neighborhood.
In a residential neighborhood, yes. Um, so in section, I believe it's 1768, nine. There's a section on advertising and it says, "Any advertising of the short-term vacation rental unit shall conform to information included in the short-term vacation rental certificate and the property's approval, particularly as it pertains to max- maximum occupancy." So all of the items that are in the approval, approval section have to be included in the advertising, which would include, you know, the majority of the rules. We'll review those to make sure we captured, uh, this discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it needs to be added that, um, whatever, whatever, um, high-level language we need to add to say that in that advertisement also has to be the rules that are posted per this ordinance inside the property.
You got that?
Yes, ma'am.
Jason, we have consensus on that?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, you're good, Ray? Um, any more discussion on the matter? So, uh, can I get, uh, consensus to move forward, Mr. Duffy? With, with going up forward? So the next read will be, the first read will be when, Jason?
Um, next Tuesday, December the 17th, we'll update the ordinance, uh, to your requested changes. We have all those notes, uh, set up. And, uh, then, uh, we'll plan for a second read on January...
7th, I believe.
7th?
January 7th.
Uh, which will also come back with the fee resolution as well. Um, we have a good, uh, pretty good idea on what that fee is going to be. We're just, uh, fine-tuning the numbers.
Okay, and we, we're hoping to have this as a city ordinance by March of 2025?
Well, yeah, we would start, we need to, um, complete out, complete building out our processes once the ordinance is complete. So we make sure we, the application has everything that's intended to be included in it. And then we will start registering folks, uh, with a March 3rd, that's first Monday in March, um, start date.
And, uh, Mr. Duffy, you'll go through and make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Everything's street legal. Okay, thank...
May I make one more quick suggestion?
Real quick, sir.
Okay, just for people like my daughter, probably talking for 200 people, that don't live in their home, but they live real close. They monitor that the Airbnb background check would also be sufficient for a resident of Palm Coast that...
We, we've already, we've already covered that, sir. That's been covered. Okay, uh, we're going to close, we're going to close this item and move on to the next, um, next presentation, a donation of Knights of Columbus, uh, Notre Da- uh, Notre Da- Notre Dame Council.
Yes, uh, Mayor and City Council, this is requested to be on your agenda today after a request was received from the Knights of Columbus. I believe, uh, Councilmember Gambaro requested this item be heard and, uh, Chief Barry Hill is going to give the presentation this morning.
Thank you guys for coming.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kyle Barryhill, Palm Coast Fire Department. Um, I just want to give you a quick overview of this. Uh, you requested this item be worshipped. It's something we've been working together with a wonderful community group, um, for, uh, almost a year now to bring this, uh, to light and... And in the news this week, there was an event in surrounding county where a child was discovered abandoned on the side of the road. And this is intended to help prevent situations like that from occurring. That's the idea behind this project. So in 2000, Florida enacted the Safe Haven Law. And what that does is it provides, it's to prevent the abandonment of newborns. So it provides a safety net for families who don't know what to do when they're in a situation where they have a newborn that that they're just not prepared for. And so by state law, any safe haven facility which includes police stations and fire stations, this is in action today, are places where a person could could drop anonymously and without fear of prosecution, a child that that they wanted someone else to help with. The Safe Haven Baby Box takes that face to face interaction, removes a barrier that a family in a situation where they're obviously feeling very confused and scared. It takes one of the barriers away from that. So a hospital or a fire station are some of these locations today. There's not, the only reason there would be questions if there was actual or suspected abuse, so an unharmed child is what this law applies to. The Safe Haven Baby Box Incorporated is a not for profit organizations that began in the state of Indiana that helps to remove that barrier. Right? Again, they're just, they're just looking to provide ways for for newborns to be safe in our country. So now there are Safe Haven Baby Boxes installed in 15 states. It's a safe and legal anonymous way to surrender a child. And in January of 2023, there was a baby saved in Ocala, and actually, one of the firefighters that was first on scene ended up adopting that child. It's a pretty great story. So 43 babies have been surrendered in baby boxes. The way, the way, actually, we'll get to that in just a second. So the Knights of Columbus approached us, we've worked with the Knights of Columbus Notre Dame Council number 10514 of the Santa Maria Del Mar Catholic Church in Flagler Beach. They're a great community partner. They honor veterans, first responders every year. Father Manny over there is great. If you haven't met him, you're missing out. He's a great guy. And as when they originally approached us, we said, hey, here are some concerns. They said, we'll take care of all the concerns. And so they've raised over $41,000 for this project. We would be the third community in Florida to have those currently. Leesburg and Ocala already have baby boxes. And the Knights of Columbus, it's their goal to make this, to be a partner in this project and not necessarily, they've basically tried to find a solution for any kind of issue that we that could occur. And so the way this works is you see in the slide there a picture of one of these baby boxes. So a child can be inserted into this box, and then it creates an alarm in the system for the fire service so that either an on duty person at that station comes, or it would alert outstanding stations. There's always six fire stations staffed with Palm Coast, but we also have community partners. We have, you know, we have closest response agreements with both Flagler Beach Fire Department and Flyer County Fire Rescue. And then the Flyer County Sheriff's Office also operates on the same dispatching system. So this would be essentially a 911 call that would be generated by this box when a child would come in. The proposal is to install this box at Fire Station 25. The Knights of Columbus believes this is the centralized location in the county. It's part of why this is be a good place. It would be the first, and then they would provide, Safe Haven Baby Box would provide training. The Knights of Columbus would sign a, there's a little bit of things for us to figure out here about how the lease agreement would be signed. But Knights of Columbus have already worked with Culver Construction and are prepared that their donation would meet the cost of the of the construction. Part of why you would do a lease is so that way you continue to provide for the maintenance associated with the baby box so that that way, you know, we were never in a situation where it wasn't a very safe and appropriate thing for a child in our community. So the budget for purchase and shipping, construction, the annual fee of $500 is just under $40,000. And then there's an annual renewal fee of $500. We could talk about that, but we would absorb that in our budget going forward. But the Knights of Columbus have proposed to donate the cost of purchase and installation. So then, if we have consensus that this is a good project, there's two options for moving forward, and and both have benefits and, you know, other things. So one of the ways, and what the Knights of Columbus is proposing, is that they donate the purchase and installation and have the interactions with the construction, but the City of Palm Coast engineering staff would have input and final sign off on the proposal. Part of why we think that we have to have that is Station 25 is certified as a as a emergency operations center. It's the backup EOC. It was actually utilized during Milton when some county resources failed. And so we want to make sure that any construction that occurs on that continues the integrity of that building so that it, we don't lose any of that capacity. And then the other process that we could occur, so that is very clean on the finance side, and so the risk is on the building side, right? And then the other process that would be possible is that the Knights of Columbus could donate the funds to the city and the city could just manage the project, and that would provide risk on the financial side. If there was any kind of extra cost or additional thing, then the city would be on the hook in that scenario. So those are our two. And so, one, we need consensus that you would like to see this project going forward. And then, two, I would be happy to discuss any of the possible options. And we do have representatives of the Knights of Columbus here. They're prepared to talk during public comment, or they would be happy to answer any questions, I'm sure.
Any discussion, Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you. This is a great thing, and and so I want to express my appreciation. If this saves one life, it's well worth it. And so just wanted to say that. And then I don't know if we want to discuss the management portion of that.
Sure, yeah, I'd just like to say, Chief, thank you for the presentation, and to the gentlemen that are here from the Knights of Columbus, it's great to see you. And you guys have been working extremely hard over the last two years and and problem solving to make this happen. So thank you for your leadership. And, you know, public safety is our number one priority, and this is, this extends that down to, you know, some of some of our youngest members of the community. So thank you for your leadership. This is a great example of how public, private, or even nonprofit partnership can come together to to make it to make it work. And and the fact that it's not going to essentially cost too much for the city, I mean, the brunt of the funds are going to come from donations raised by the Knights of Columbus and the perpetual maintenance of it for the out years, I think it's just fantastic. So really, thank you all for doing this.
Teresa, do you have anything?
I do, thank you. I'll echo my fellow colleagues' comments on the gratitude for working towards this. Of course, my family law brain goes to the the child safety aspect of this, so I had a few questions. My first question is, who assumes liability of a child once it is abandoned? And then, once abandoned, are there, is it, is it legally clear that that parent has now forfeited their parental rights? And then, is there any signage on these baby boxes with regards to that? Because the last thing that I would want is to see us, in our efforts to do a good deed, wrapped up in any litigation with the parent that maybe puts their child in in one of these situations and then comes back, tries to reclaim the child or anything of that nature.
Yes, ma'am. So some of this is, we've definitely run this proposal by Marcus through the city attorney, and we believe that we are within the same risk profile that we are in as a safe haven based on the 2000 law with this box. We don't believe that this is increasing the risk profile in a way. You know, the nature of being in our business is the assumption of risk. And so, yes, there is some liability associated here, and some of the questions that you have, I don't have exactly easy answers to, but we believe that this is a situation where the potential benefit outweighs the potential liability. But that would be, I guess, my recommendation from the Fire Department.
And I don't disagree with you, Chief, as far as, you know, this needing to be something that we move forward with. I'm in support of this project, but I do think that it's fair that we be fully aware of what that liability could look like. So while I hear, I hear that the the benefit outweighed the costs, I don't know what those costs are. So I guess that's what I'm looking for, whether it's a a legal analysis or a a policy, I just don't know. So that's, I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, ma'am. So I think we can definitely come back and provide a legal analysis of the liability associated. I do know that the Safe Haven Baby Box nonprofit has not had any liability issues, and they've had to do some defending of their position in Florida based on questions that have arisen on not post incident but pre. Like, so there was definitely some talk during, I think, in the legislature in 2022 about whether or not this confined, this was consistent with that Safe Haven Law. And my understanding is that that was that was worked out, and and there wasn't further action necessary to be taken. But we can provide, go ahead, Marcus. I see him reaching for his microphone.
Just, I wanted to, can you answer Ms. Pontiara's question? Is there anything about posting about, you know, giving any type of direction when the baby is dropped off, anything like that?
Yes, we currently have posting that references the Safe Haven Florida statute at the fire stations, and you'll see that in hospitals. It's a, it's a stork picture, and then it just has the Florida statute on there. And so specific posting on the on the baby box, if there is not something sufficient, then we can clearly develop signage to put close to that. But part of the nature of the process is you really want the the baby box itself to be very clearly for for that, not for, you know, Christmas come true toys or or something like, or, you know, any of those other kind of things that people drop off at fire stations. Right? We want it to be.
I agree with that. I just, I guess my, and if it if it does have the that statutory language posted, I do think that that could probably be sufficient, but maybe some reference to very high level, you know, please be aware of your rights or abandonment of them pursuant to Florida statute, whatever. I don't know the exact statute number, but I think that 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 would be sufficient. Again, I just want to, I don't want what is is ultimately a very good thing that we're doing to to end up costing us money in in a law, in a big way. The other question I have is, I guess, so in the future, will we be looking at the actual legalities of the lease? Who would the lease actually be between?
So the the lease would be between, so there's, there's two proposals, and we can bring this back to you. The Knights of Columbus has offered to be the signee of the lease, but I also think that there's a lot of rationale to making the city the leasing of the of the box. And then that would provide us with, you know, this is, like many grant projects, there is sometimes reoccurring costs, but by far, the obstacle is usually the startup cost. And so my recommendation would be that we would be the leasing going forward of the box, and so that we would be responsible for the maintenance. And the reason that the not for profit requests a lease, I actually have some background here, Pat Giuliano did all this work, and then he's being required to be somewhere else this morning, is that it just helps that that not for profit keep the box up to speed, right, essentially? So that's the idea.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
So what do you need from us to move forward, Chief?
Just consensus. One, that this is a good project. I feel like we have that. And then, two, if you prefer the method where the Knights donate the purchase and installation, our engineering team works with them to make sure that all items keep the fire station's capacity up to the, you know, standard in the city. Or, two, if you would prefer us to accept the donation and then commit to the project. And so that would be a different, we'll be coming back to you at a business meeting with this and we work that out based on your consensus today.
Okay, for me, for me, I would say let it stay with the Knights of Columbus because they're going to, like you said, if there was additional costs, they would, they would buffer that for us. And then who would pay the annual $500 lease? Would that be us or the Knights of Columbus? Knights of Columbus would be paying it? Right? So I would say leave it in their hands, you know, other than, but that's just my opinion. What, councils?
I agree.
Oh, yes, sir. Step right up. Yes, sir. Step up, sir, please.
I'm Brian Persick. I'm the deputy grand knight of the Knights of Columbus Council. And this is, I guess, my project for the last two years, so. But a couple of things I can clear up. First of all, we're stepping up, and we're going to do the the annual $500 maintenance fee, which includes Safe Haven coming in and checking the box and and things like that to make sure everything is working in order. One of the questions, I believe there's a a packet inside the box that the mother or whoever is dropping the baby off would pick up or could pick up, and it explains what their rights are and what rights they're giving up, I guess, by dropping off the baby. One thing is, one little misconception, the lease can't be between the Knights of Columbus and Safe Haven because the the language in the lease requires you to be able to have some control of the facility, and it's obviously the the Fire Department and the city. So I've talked to Safe Haven about this. So their recommendation is we, as the Knights of Columbus, donate to them the funds to secure the lease. And that, but the lease would be between the the city and and Safe Haven. We would pay the the fee for the the installation, and we can either work directly with the construction company, but if the city is more comfortable with their engineers working directly with the the construction company, that's is fine also. We would pay his fee, which is $22,000 some odd dollars for for the construction. I would like to say that this has been a total community event. You know, the donations, our council has put up about $10,000 through having dances, and our monies from our from our bingo. And the, I can tell you, the parish donated $5,000 through individual donations. The Kiwanis donated $5,000. Each of the other two Knights of Columbus councils in the county, Elizabethan, Seton, and St. Mary's, each donated $2,000 to this. And the Kiwanis kids also donated $500. They took it upon themselves to design a project. They built or made buttons on their own and sold them, donated the proceeds, which was $500. So, you know, this has been a wide range community that is behind this project. So, you know, it's, and when the fundraising started about a year ago, there was a baby that was left in a parking lot in Palatka. And when that happened, the donations just started flowing in. So, you know, it's something that the community realizes would be a benefit. And Safe Haven will tell you that this is a last resort. They don't mean to be the norm. They will consult people. They, part of the box, they will provide a 24 hour hotline, a crisis hotline, that a mother, a family could call and get direction, and they'll give them other options. And again, the last resort is the baby box. They realize that mentally, a mother that donates or gives up her baby face to face is better off than just dropping it in a box. But again, it's meant as a last resort. Obviously, a much better option than finding the baby in a dumpster or in a field or parking lot somewhere. But, and I can say that- But and I can say that I just got a notice from Safe Haven that they just received the 14th baby this year across the country that was dropped off in in this device. So and I hope that answers your questions. And I'm always available for for any follow-up questions.
All right, thank you, sir. So Chief, you just want consensus from us moving forward with the project and either is it your recommendation that we go with the city handling it as far as the engineers and install, you know, that going that route?
Yes, sir, we're looking for council direction. There's there's risks and benefits to both and we can we can do either side. So the way the way that the Knights presented is perfectly amenable to us.
So what we're looking at is they're paying the initial installation. They're gonna pay the annual renewal fee, the $500. But if there's any cost overruns as far as the actual installation, it's gonna fall on us.
That can be your decision. So if you were to choose for us to accept the donation of the of money and then us to manage the project, there are some procurement rules and processes that are in place in the city that we would have to follow. And there is, you know, a little bit, it changes a little bit from the fact that the Knights have 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 worked with a contractor, so that's a change. So whatever this council directs, we're gonna do and happily do. It's almost never that a community group comes with a problem and then says, here's the solution and the money for the solution, or even $1 towards the solution. So we think this is a really great value investment, but there is two separate sets of processes. And so what I'm looking for is if you ask us to say, we would like the Knights of Columbus to purchase the cost of construction and then the city to assist with managing that process, that's one way. The other way is for the Knights of Columbus to make a donation to the city and then we would follow all of our processes in regards to the construction. Either way, though, we have to have the ability to maintain the integrity of the station. That that is part of what we we need to have.
Consensus? Let them let them handle it, the first option, right?
Yeah, I'm agreed, I'm inclined to go with the with letting the Knights of Columbus handle it.
Yeah, so my my only question would be oversight. And if the chief's comfortable with that situation, because it's his facility, then I'm certainly willing to go with that.
Consensus, you with us, Teresa?
Yes, I defer to Chief Berryhill.
All right, so you have you have our okay there, Chief.
Excellent.
It's a great project and and you hate to see it, but it happens every day. So thank you, gentlemen, for your your tireless efforts in trying to save children in our community. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and huge thank you to the Knights for all this hard work. It's a really great thing.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to item E3, UCF Small Business Development Center Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. While our team is coming up to the presentation table, the city did engage the Small Business Development Center with UCF during last fiscal year. So our presenter is here to talk to you about SBDC and a little bit of the efforts that accomplished last year. Craig?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Craig McKinney, Economic Development Manager, City of Palm Coast. The University of Central Florida Small Business Development Center, or UCF SBDC, offers a wide range of services to support entrepreneurs and small businesses in their growth and success. Some of the key services provided by the US UCF SBDC include business consulting, access to capital, market research and analysis, export assistance, technology, commercialization, strategic planning, and other specialized services. Today presenting, we have Michael Oppenheim, who's been affiliated with SBDC for over nine years. He is currently area manager for the SBDC for the City of Palm Coast and he is a resident of Palm Coast and Flagler County. So with that, I'll hand it over to Michael.
Thank you.
Mayor Norris, Vice Mayor Pontieri, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you today. This brief presentation will go over three distinct areas. First, refresh you on who we are and what we do. Secondly, go ahead and provide you with the services we provide and the tools that we utilize, the unique tools that we utilize to accomplish that. And lastly, to share the results that we accomplished during the last fiscal year, which went from October 1st of '23 to September 30th of '24. There are close to 1,000 SBDC centers throughout communities throughout the United States. We are part, we fall under a branch of the federal government, the SBA, the Small Business Administration. And each one of the SBDC centers is hosted by a public university. It links the state education system with community outreach. And Craig went through some of the things that we provide. I'll go into a little more detail on that. The Florida SBDC Network was founded in 1976. The SBDC for UCF covers eight counties, spreading from Osceola, Orange, Seminole, Brevard, Lake Sumter, Volusia, and our county, Flagler County. And each county provides us with some funding, so it's greatly appreciated to continue the process. You can see here on this particular slide, each one of the public universities is linked into geographic and regional area. So nine separate universities within our state support the SBDC and host the SBDC. And quite frankly, in every state in the country, it is supported by local universities. At the end of the day, when you look at our mission and vision, our goal is to help and assist existing small business owners grow and support their business as well as assist entrepreneurs to start their business within our community. As I know all of you are aware, the majority of the businesses, especially in our community, are small businesses and they need our support greatly and we are happy to provide that support to them. At a very high level, the services we provide is research and basic consulting and the outcomes are to grow their business, to add more employees, to provide support into the community, help them with government contracts, and go ahead and also improve their marketing efforts. Because one of the things that we see is we have great entrepreneurs and small business owners, but assisting them in their marketing efforts to grow their business is tantamount to their success. The key to this, it is no cost. If I meet with a client one time or meet with a client 21 times, there is never a charge that goes back to one of our small business owners or would-be entrepreneurs. We are certified business consultants and we are required each year to attend 20 hours of personal development training. The confidentiality is key. Each one of our clients has signs a non-disclosure confidentiality agreement with us, so we are not able to share any information about that particular client and what they're trying to achieve to obtain their results. On a more detailed level, I'll try to give you a few examples because these are a lot of words on here. For example, one of the tools that we utilize that's unique to us is we can provide them with website analysis for SEO, for search engine optimization. We can take a business, just by way of example, if they happen to be a florist, we can compare financial ratios of their business as a florist with other businesses throughout our general area, throughout our state, throughout the country, to see if they are maximizing their output and income opportunities. Also, and we we all live here, we just went through them, we provide assistance with disaster recovery, which is critical. We help with capital formation. A lot of our entrepreneurs have great ideas, but they need funding. We assist in processing the paperwork, helping them create three-year financial pro formas, business plans, in order to go and approach the banks to obtain funding to start their business. And one thing that's not on here that we also do is we do, we provide business evaluations. I've assisted local businesses in trying to acquire businesses as well as divest their business to get them with the proper evaluation to make sure they're either getting the best deal if they're buying or getting the best deal if they're selling their particular business. Some of the tools that are unique to us that we utilize are vertical IQ, which we can provide a tremendous amount of industry analysis. That also provides them with forecasts into the future of a particular industry they that they'd like to go through. We have another tool where if someone is interested in doing business with retail operations, we can get a list and create key pertinent information on a list of any particular SIC code or NACs code that's out there. We also use for government contracting, we assist with BidMatch. We get their name into the government system, so they will be able to to obtain operations and be able to see what bid opportunities are out there for them. And the last thing, which I mentioned earlier, is a BizMinor tool that we have that's unique to us is we can compare their financial ratios up to similar businesses within their line of business that they operate. The other thing that we provide is immense amount of training and education for our clients. This year alone, our all of our clients, we had 101 webinars and seminars to help them grow their business. It could be something as simple as how to manage your business better through Google. It could be government contracting. It could be how to be a better strategic planner. We assist with human resources as well. So a tremendous amount of opportunities from a training perspective that we provide to our clients. And lastly, our results, which again took place from 10:01 to 9:30, we served 72 business, 511 consulting hours, close to 200 consulting sessions, which is one thing on the next one, which is a little bit rare for us. We actually helped with capital formation of $1.8 million. And these are for, again, for local businesses, 18 new jobs, 14 jobs retained. We helped increase sales over half a million dollars and we started five new businesses. So we're very proud of the results. We're thankful for the participation of the City of Palm Coast and looking forward to continue the process with you.
Thank you, sir. I'm assuming you have met Craig and you guys are working closely.
Absolutely.
He's very, he's very motivated about bringing industry and jobs into here in our in our community. So keep pushing forward, gentlemen, I appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, any any other comments from the DIAS?
As a small business owner myself, I think these are extremely helpful tools. Quite frankly, I wish I would have known about them when I started my business. That way I didn't, you know, have to learn stuff the hard way. But certainly will serve as an advocate to try to pass these.
Thank you, greatly appreciated. A lot of a lot of small businesses, when they find out about us, that they use those exact words. I wish I would have known about you sooner, but being part of a government agency, it's a lot, it's difficult to to market. We're not allowed to put big billboards up on, say, call us. But word of mouth is great and I can tell you that Craig and the in the team out front, they they spread the word and it's very noticeable that they're, anytime someone comes in for business tax receipts, they mention our services and we get a lot of local business owners to call us and we're able to assist them.
I appreciate it. You got something, Ty?
No, I was just gonna echo the thanks for the work that you guys are doing. It's huge for small businesses, any leg up, you know, obviously makes a difference, so thank you.
You, Ray, you have anything? Teresa, you have anything?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Are we, do we promote their services on the city website so people point, they can click them and go to the website?
Yes, sir, we promote it, we promote it via the city website. And as Michael alluded to, we really kind of push it out at the Business Tax Office receipt window. We have Michael's cards. We get a lot of traffic, actually, believe it or not, from small business owners that we funnel to Michael in that regard.
I think I fall in that same category, sir. I'm a small, we have two small businesses, businesses. So I appreciate your help and continue to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to E4?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, while Mr. Hurst and Ms. Bowen is getting ready for their presentation, want to give you a little bit more information about this opportunity. As you saw yesterday at our beautiful Southern Recreation Center, we've got five new courts going in at the facility. And that was as a benefit from the USTA. They put in the courts and then we put all the additional infrastructure in for those courts. So as part of that process, Laura's gonna give a presentation about who the USTA is and an opportunity that they have to share with us.
Excellent. Thank you, Lauren. Mr. Mayor, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. I think I've been here three or four different times and I, I think the last time I was here, there was a presentation by the sheriff. The last presentation, it's always really educational for me, so thank you all for inviting me to come here. Just a quick note about me, I am the Executive Director for USTA Florida. I've been there for 13 years. And previously, we were based in Daytona Beach, so I do always enjoy coming over here on this side of the state. Currently, we are based in Orlando at the USTA National Campus. As Lauren mentioned, one of the reasons we wanted to come here today was just to share with you who we are and some of the services that we can potentially provide to you should you decide that you would like our assistance moving forward. One of the unique things about USTA Florida is we are a not-for-profit volunteer-led organization. We have been around for 75 years and we are recognized as the governing body for tennis in Florida. Our mission is to promote and develop tennis for all and we currently have about 1.7 million total players in the state of Florida with about 1.7 more who say they want to play tennis. We run the largest adult recreational sports leagues in the country. Here in Florida, that's 20,000 unique players. And we also host more than 1,000 tournaments each year just in the state of Florida. So tennis is a pretty big beast here in Florida. In addition to that, we're very proud of our youth, adult, and adaptive grassroots program, which is a large part of our focus. We like to serve everyone and we do say we are here to serve. So in every community, we ask, what is it that the community wants? And we never want to turn anybody away who wants to play tennis. So this year, 2024, was our 75th year and our anniversary and we were happy to feature the Southern Recreation Center, formerly known as the Palm Coast Tennis Center, which you'll see in the slides as part of our storied history here in Florida. How we support public parks is, public tennis parks are a key priority for us. Most of the tennis professionals that you're probably familiar with, that you watch on TV or you have watched on TV, actually started playing in the public parks. And here in Florida, that's especially true. Players like Marty Fish, Mary Jo Fernandez, they all started, Chrissy Evert, in public tennis parks. They are very, very critical to our sport. So what we do as a strategic priority for our section is we are here to serve our public parks. It's a large piece of our focus. We do provide full-service assessments to any public city that would ask. We provide guidance and support to public facilities throughout the state of Florida. What we want to see is that all of the public tennis centers thrive and that they're able to serve everyone in the community. We currently actively manage four public tennis centers through partnerships with four different cities and four different areas of the state. Fort Walton Beach, which is where I was over the weekend, Gainesville, Cocoa Beach, and our most recent addition, Vero Beach, which was about a year and a half ago. But whether we manage a tennis center or not does not diminish any of the support we provide. We're always happy to come in and support any city that asks. So what we do is we do provide funds to expand and improve existing tennis facilities. So as Lauren mentioned, we provided a $700,000 grant to add five tennis courts to the Southern Recreation Center. And part of the reason we did that is the original vision for the Palm Coast Tennis Center, I believe, was 20 courts. And you have a fantastic tennis association here in Palm Coast that advocated for that back when the players' club closed or was struggling. And we wanted to get closer to that vision. We also can bring major events to the facility that help drive economic returns and I have some data on that to share in a little bit. Certainly balancing major events like the Pro Circuit event that we do and any others with the local play is something that we think we're pretty good at. So we try to provide advice and guidance on that when cities need it. We also help with coach training and education and different program development. Every city is unique. Every city is unique, who you're trying to serve is unique, and that means every program would be a little bit unique to the community. And yes, we manage public tennis centers. And yes, two of them include pickleball. We get that question quite a bit. And we do collaborate with our municipalities on that and how best to support both activities. So why invest in tennis? We're still the biggest racket sport out there. And since 2018, we've added half a million tennis players. As I mentioned before, our current tennis players top 1.6 million, and that number could easily double. We do serve all ages and demographics, so that's what's unique about tennis, is you can play it your entire life, whether you're five or 95. And we do have 95-year-old players, believe it or not. So it is an ideal sport for youth and adults of all ages, and we play a lot. Florida has more core tennis players than any other state in the nation. So we play more in every 30 days, more than 30 days a year, most of our players do. So the frequency of play is good and it bodes well for healthy tennis facilities. So we just released our most recent economic impact study, which only focused on the recreational events that we host. So that includes our 1,000 tournaments, and it also includes our sectional championships. And so you can see here the economic power of just that subset that we have. It's almost $82 million in sports-related traveler spending. But it also creates jobs. And I think that's what's really important is that when we come in and bring events in, like the Pro Circuit event and others, it actually supports local jobs, supports your hotels, your retails, and hopefully offsets some of the tax dollars that you have to spend on these services. So what that looks like here is about 1,000 jobs supported and about 11.4 million in total state and local taxes, just on that subset of what we do. For us, as USTA Florida, we also did an analysis of the ROI for what we spend. And so for every dollar that we spend as USTA Florida, we get almost $13 in visitor spend, almost $7 in income supported, and then just under $2 in local taxes. So clearly, an economic driver for the state and also local communities that support tennis. So as Lauren mentioned, we did provide a growth grant to the city of Palm Coast. By the way, this was the largest grant that we've ever provided to a municipality in the amount of $700,000, and we were very happy to do it, to add five additional tennis courts at what was formerly known the Palm Coast Tennis Center, now Southern Recreation Center. There were several requirements for this grant. They had to be completed in the calendar year 2024. And I have to give a shout out to Lauren and her team. They have done a masterful job managing this project and we see the progress. They share it with us. And I know that they are on target, so we're very excited about that. We also did require that we choose the vendor, which is Welch, and they're a phenomenal vendor, and they do this very, very well all over the state. And we are direct pay to them. So we do progress billing and we have paid them as the project has continued. The city of Palm Coast generously covered all the site prep and additional costs, so we thank you for that. The project would not have happened without that partnership. And that we have had the opportunity to engage regularly during the the project to ensure that everything is going well and meeting the high standards. We also will continue to make recommendations to the city on the maintenance needed annually and overtime to keep the courts in top-playing condition. That is something that we want to make sure that these courts are nice and new and that they stay that way. And part of the requirement was that we start to have discussions on how we can have full-service programming and potential, any potential management opportunities for racket sports at the facility. I know that the city of Palm Coast has had management arms in here before, private managers to run the facilities. We're different. We're not-for-profit. We're not here to make money. We're here to get people playing. So a little bit different than other relationships you may have had with people managing your recreational facilities. And then we have done a feature on the tennis trail for this location. I believe we did that in July, and the city featured it also in your publication. So drilling down to what we do in terms of a program and management services approach, I would say we are the experts in how to staff and manage a vibrant racket sports facility. Not only do we directly manage four of these, but we actually have an advisory team of five to six people that actually do this in other cities. That includes Treasure Island, Wellington, Orange County Parks. So they have a wealth of experience and knowledge, and they're a volunteer service to us, and we get their knowledge for free. Also, as the governing body of tennis in Florida, as I mentioned, we sanction more than 1,000 tournaments, and we directly host more than 25 sectional championship events each year. We combine that with our partnerships and facilities across the state. We really do have unparalleled knowledge of the best practices in play for all ages and abilities. So what does the 15 clay courts do for Palm Coast? I think this is really important. Because you've expanded to 15 clay courts and you have the covered pickleball play, you really have sort of a first-class location to host any number of events that you would want to at this location. The challenge that you often find is who's going to host and coordinate them, right? That level of expertise, particularly for a larger facility, you know, there aren't a lot of people out there. So I think that's important, but you do have the ability now, and our data shows this, that it opens up the door for you to host a lot more events and to do more trainings and to bring in additional programming. So the program additions specifically is looking at the programs that you have, how to staff them, how to put junior programs, leagues, ladders, round robins, to really keep this a vibrant play opportunity and create potential revenue for the Recreation Center. And then, of course, the economic impact that I mentioned earlier, scheduling events that can have that economic impact without disturbing and disrupting your regular play. So some management service benefits to the city. We certainly looked at an old budget from 2023 that you all had, and I think that was roughly $400,000 in expenses at that time. I'm sure that's changed. But in essence, bringing on someone like USTA Florida to manage the facility, all of those expenses would be incurred by us. That means we take on the equipment and we also do all the human resource finances marketing. So going back to one of the previous discussions, our business model for operating a tennis center, we hire our staff as employees, and we do that for background check and safe sport, which we are obligated to follow as a national governing body. And we take that very, very, very seriously. So we have a little bit of a different business model than most concessionaires would, in that we hire people, they work for us, and we maintain the highest standards for our employees. And then in terms of additional benefits, obviously, I mentioned we are a nonprofit partner. We usually share the goals that the city has for greater participation. We're not here to make money. We do recruit, train, and develop our staff. We develop and implement all technology and software programs run to run the center, and we also contract directly with event partners when needed. We provide liability insurance as part of our umbrella coverage, and then we give you free expertise and guidance for any future expansion and development, which we would do regardless of whether we were in any type of management discussion or not. So what's next for us? We're not here today to make a management proposal. We just wanted to kind of share what we generally do. But what we would like to do is we are now in the final stages of inspecting and potentially paying for the tennis court expansion. So we hope to see that happen by the end of December as scheduled. We would love to host a celebratory event when those courts were completed to celebrate the great work that you all have done here and to bring the tennis community and the pickleball community out to do that. We would also love to host a Q and A with the local players in the community. We typically do that in our locations where we want to learn more about what's working and what's not. We're very open to hearing from the community. And then certainly would be open at this council's request to do a full assessment and potential proposal. How those assessments work is we gather a lot of feedback from the community and what they like, what they like to see. We also do a benchmark comparison to other facilities of similar size and similar nature. And then we hand that information to you all and say, this is what we've learned about what's working well here, what maybe could be done better. And then we allow you all to assess that or look at that and ask us questions. So we've done that in several locations that we manage, and we just did it in a location, a large city, that we do not manage but was very interested in doing that assessment with us. So we certainly could move forward with that in Q2 or at a later time if this council was interested in that. So that was all the information I had for you today. Hopefully, I didn't go through that too quickly, but I'm very open to answering any questions or just gathering any information you have for me.
Thank you, Laura. Any comments from the DIAS? Got anything, Mr. Hurst?
No, I think it's a it can be a great partnership. There are some areas that we do well, and there's some areas that the USTA can help us out as well.
Okay. And is it going to be finished by the end of the year? We're coming up on a hard.
Yeah, it's on, as Laura said, it is on time for the courts. Is that is that is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're on.
A lot of work going on out there yesterday. Thank you, Laura. I appreciate your time and hope to see you soon.
My pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, point of order. So this matter should still go up to public comment?
I'm going to, I'm sorry.
And I was just going to say, the last two items, we didn't do that. So for this, just say.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's my fault, not reminding you.
No, I realized I messed up. I should let the public comment on the Knights of Columbus. So I'll open this up for a public comment. Do I have any anyone that would like to publicly comment on this matter? Keep me straight, Marcus.
Good morning. I'm Agnes Lightfoot. I'm president of Friends of Tennis. And we also, I also have with me Nikki.
Nikki White, and I'm just a tennis player and I'm the I'm the committee that's watching what's going on.
Yeah, we're watching what's going on because we're so excited about the new courts that are coming in. And as James mentioned, they are looking like they're on schedule. We've been with the tennis facility since it first opened years ago. But what we hear today about is that if the U S USTA comes in for managing the facility, we want you, the city council, to keep some things in mind. Not just the good part about letting us play, but the maintenance of the facility. When we talk about maintenance of the facility is clay courts, so we want to keep that in mind because that is a price issue. That is an issue that affects you, me, and all of us as taxpayers as well. And also the amount of time that we would have as players. Right now, we can schedule time to play, but if another organization comes in, do they reduce that? Do we have less time to play? And that's part of the fun of being a tennis player. And of course, another thing is that we have a facility now that has a restaurant there. Who takes care of that? Who makes the decisions about, does that restaurant continue or do they manage that? Or if it's closed, they just say, hey, it's it's your facility, you take care of it. So we want to make sure of these things. And of course, pickleball, oh, my gosh, is it growing. Most of our citizens here love it, and our facility is a number one. We want to keep it that way. And as we grow, we may want to expand that because there's so many people who love playing pickleball. And we want to hear more from USTA when they come in to make their assessment. Where does that stand? And of course, our children's program, which is so important. The future of tennis, you see it on TV, and it's played all over the world, and everybody is 20 years old or less. So we want to get our local citizens to play, just like we've had a peck of play for us over the years. So we just thought, these are the things that needs to be brought up even now, even before you make some final decisions, because tennis is important to us.
I don't know what else you want us to say, but Agnes has been running the Friends of Tennis for a very long time and has her heart and soul invested in it. We run activities that we have historically done for the community and for the tennis center. We want to know what the partnership is going to be at that level, too. When you give away your business to somebody else, there are consequences, and we need to look at those carefully. We'll wait for the assessment, and we'll be talking to you again, I'm sure.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lightfoot. Nikki, thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Mary Routson, and I am a true pickleball player. I don't care anything about tennis. I love pickleball. I need to know what they're going to do with the courts. Are they going to continue to run the programs as well as James Hurst and his group has always done? Are we going to have all our tournaments and ladder leagues? And are they going to maintain the courts as well? Are they going to focus strictly on nothing but tennis tournaments and not do anything for pickleball? Pickleball is a lot bigger. You have more pickleball members at the at the Southern Rec Center than you do tennis. You need to pay a lot more attention to pickleball than you do tennis. I get tennis is an old sport, but you're not keeping up with maintenance on tennis courts at Holland Park, Bel Air. None of those courts are being maintained at all. You need to start focusing on those as well. If you're not going to, if you're going to let tennis run pickleball, then you're going to run a lot of pickleball players out of the Southern Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Kim Cirillo. I am a pickleball player also. I am part of a league that is throughout the state of Florida. And I heard much, much about tennis, not as much about pickleball. Pickleball is the number one fastest-growing sport, not only in the United States of America, but also worldwide. It is growing. And right here in Flagler County, it is growing, it's exploded. And a lot of those players are tennis players that are coming over to pickleball. So I would like to see more about pickleball as much as she is saying about tennis, that much in pickleball. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rattle Schuh. I'm a member of the Southern Recreation Center and a tennis player. I think my suggestions would be, with regard to USTA involvement, to get a clearer idea of exactly how it would provide services. The it appears that the city budget is sometimes constraining in doing things that would help tennis players. One of them is getting professional professional coaching services, have a tennis pro, for example, or more than one tennis pro available onsite, something that could certainly be improved, I think, in many, many tennis players who range from much less experience, I would be in that category, to to actually very accomplished players, could benefit from having pro services. League play is a big deal here. The Greater Evolution of Tennis League has a long history. There's some USTA involvement as well, but I think many people believe that having having opportunities for both both leagues to function at the tennis center would would also be a very desirable feature. So in the end, I suppose that the council would want to hear from the USTA on on how some of these additional services or amplification of those services could be provided and how that would affect the operation of the tennis center overall and the and the tennis players that are that are very devoted to these lovely new facilities that are being finished up as we as we speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. James, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Morning. My name's George Opelka. I'm a local taxpayer, and I'm also very active in the as part of my my career, I'm very active in both the tennis and the pickleball space. And first of all, I want to just commend the the city for an amazing facility that we have. I've been over, I've been last, you know, 25 years, I've been to tennis facilities all over the world and and several across the state that are that are.
Municipalities?
City managed. Not a polysyllabic guy. So anyway, I've worked very closely with the USTA at both the national level as well as with sections all around the country. And Florida, the Florida USTA section is arguably the most successful and most professionally-run section of all the sections. I've, you know, they've already put their money where their mouth is here with what they've done with respect to these these five new courts. They do this all around the state, you know, very active and and very, a lot of philanthropic work with HBCU tennis programs around around the state, most recently Florida A and M, as well as Edward Waters University Program up in Jacksonville. And they're going to do the same thing here. I mean, just with just getting more, the thing that we need in this with, we've got a. The thing that we need in this, with, we've got an amazing first-class facility, but we need first-class programming. It doesn't matter if it's pickleball, it doesn't matter if it's tennis, and five years from now, it's probably going to be Padell out at our facility. That's really the most, fastest-growing racket sport around the world. So we need to be able to evolve, and USTA Florida, in my opinion, is an amazing partner opportunity. And I think you'll find out that they're going to listen, and they're going to listen to what the city needs, what the community needs. So I think we need to hear them out and see what they have to offer. But to me, this, you know, to me, this is an IQ test. It's a no-brainer. So excited for what we have and seeing it build out. I think we can support pickleball, we can support tennis, and whatever the next racket sport is, but I think we can also put heads in beds with better programming and more events here. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Scott Furman. I live in the E section, and I started playing tennis at seven years old when it used to be the US LTA, Lawn Tennis Association. But I'm a longtime tennis player, retired, tried to get better at tennis, kept getting hurt, found pickleball in 2015, and I've played pickleball since then. Tournaments, different clubs, and I'd just be, you know, USL or USTA, I'd be interested in finding, in knowing what pickleball facilities they have checked into or what pickleball facilities they're part of nationwide or in Florida, and who have they talked to about pickleball. I'm aware of clubs that have changed to hourly rates, which doesn't seem to work at pickleball. Pickleball is the most social racket sport that I've ever played. You don't play the same people. You know, every 20 minutes or every 30 minutes, you switch to another couple people that you play with. You meet and greet constantly. I've been playing for almost 10 years now, and it's been a great experience for me, gave me something to do after retirement, and I'd hate, you know, the beautiful facility you built here. I was at Pictona. That's a great facility. The Martins are great people. I'm just interested in finding out more about how they plan to run a pickleball facility rather than the tennis facility. I have nothing against tennis. It's a great sport, keeps you active, but I would just like to know more about their pickleball side and how they plan or how they would look into running a pickleball facility. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any more public participation, any more comments? So we'll close public participation compacted at DIAS. James, someone hit me up the other day about the other courts at the other parks, specifically Holland, as far as nets being available for pickleball play out there. Are those courts being maintained properly, and can we work out something possibly to be able to get nets out there? I'm not a pickleball person, so I don't, you're speaking Greek to me.
Yeah, so those courts out there, I think they're about, well, I think close to probably seven to 10 years old. We are, when we're doing our inspections, we have noticed some cracking within the, on the court, so we do have a plan to go out there and patch some cracks. So at least, you know, until we get it onto our R and R CIP, we can at least stop any more of the cracks just widening. With the nets for the pickleball, they are rentable at the community center. We do have a rental system where you come in, it's free. You just come in, give us your driver's license, we make an account through Civic Rec. You can take the nets, take them to Holland, take them to Bel Air, or take them, you know, to backyard or anything like that, and you can use those nets to play pickleball there. We have found that's probably a better way, and, you know, instead of having staff consistently at the park, which we just
It's not feasible.
Yeah. So this rentable, equipment rental, we think works very well. It is just come to the community center, and then you can take it, and you can have it for the day, have it for a couple of days, and then bring it back. We just check it, check it back in, and then you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. We'll do, we'll do our set down, I think, at the first of the year. And I know this answer if we had already done that, but I appreciate your time, and I'll let that person know that that's available. I appreciate it.
Yeah, if you need any more, just let us know.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any more discussion from the DIAS?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you first to USTA for the grant and helping to provide these facilities for us and our residents. It's huge, as well as, you know, the partnership with tournaments and things like that. For the residents, you know, talking about service level, cost, you're heard. Obviously, we'll get into the details later with that proposal presentation, but, you know, just want to make sure that service level is being maintained for both sports within that proposal as well as, you know, different options for cost recovery and things like that. And that's all I have.
Anything, any other comments from the DIAS?
Just quickly, just quickly, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that we do have a focus in programming on wheelchair and adaptive accessibility. I know I've been pretty vocal on my support for Special Olympics in our community, and I just want to make sure that as we move forward with this partnership, we keep that at the forefront and just ensure that our programming is very inclusive for those sports as well.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, we do have currently some programs out there where we're working with Special Olympics on some tennis programs. We're dabbling into wheelchair tennis for both pickleball and tennis, and also Special Olympics is helping, is doing some pickleball, some programs out there as well. So we're already kind of continuing, working with Special Olympics.
Awesome. Thank you, James.
Okay, with, and we are just getting started with this whole facility and working out, and I know some people are reluctant to making any agreements, so, and someone voiced that concern last night to me, but we are not at that, we are not at that stage yet. We are not there yet. So more to come on this one, right, James?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you, sir. We're going to move on to Craig's presentation on Economic Development 2024 Updates.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. While Mr. McKinney is coming to the presentation table, very similar in context with giving you an update on the SBDC efforts, we also wanted to give you an update on our economic development efforts, loop in a little bit of next steps and look for your direction as I know this is a priority and focus area for all of you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Lauren. Craig, have at it, brother.
All right, again, Craig McKinney, Economic Development Manager, City of Palm Coast. And again, good morning, Mayor Norris, members of the city council and guests. Today, I'm excited to present an overview of our economic development efforts in Palm Coast in 2024, highlighting recent accomplishments, ongoing initiatives, and future opportunities as we turn the corner into the new year and with a new council. Beginning with recent updates, over the past year, we've been actively involved in key initiatives, including giving presentations to groups here locally, like the Palm Coast Business Professionals, and groups like the Healthcare Circle of Excellence in a presentation that I did in Jacksonville. We've also attended events like the International Economic Development Council Convention and the 2024 Florida Learners-to-E earners Workforce Solution Summit. These engagements have strengthened Palm Coast visibility as an emerging hub for investment and location, and in the example from the Florida Learners-to-E earners Workforce Solution Summit, it led directly to the city collaborating with groups like the Early Learning Coalition of Flagler and Volusia, which I'm thrilled about, and the city will be partnering with that group at a book fair at the community center early next year. Next up, our target industry feasibility study was released in October and conducted data-driven analysis and in-person interviews with stakeholders such as Advent Health, Flagler County Economic Development and Tourism, Flagler County Executive Airport, the Local Chamber of Commerce, Jax USA, FPNL, Flagler County Schools, and Career Source. The study reviewed seven potential industries and how our workforce and our resources align to meet the specific needs of each industry, and it's meant to be a data-backed blueprint as we chart a course going forward. Next up, we've greatly enhanced the city's economic development website, starting with changing the domain name to selectpalmcoast.com. Other improvements include a completely revamped property listings page that includes embedded occupational and demographic data, and it's also an improved interface designed specifically for companies and site selectors that might be looking at our area. We've also rebuilt all of the pages in our target industry section, and we're currently working on all other ancillary pages. Finally, on the homepage of the website, we replaced the photo of the bridge that had previously served as the banner photo of the website's homepage, and we replaced it with workforce development footage that Daytona State College provided my office, and then the city's media and communications team then spliced together into a rolling video feed, which is now the leading visual on the website's homepage. We've also significantly amplified our digital presence by creating the Palm Coast Economic Development LinkedIn Page. The Pages feed is focused on consistent positive messaging that spotlight, spotlights economic development announcements from Palm Coast and multipliers across the region and state. And a couple of examples that we see on this slide, the photo on the left just shows the Pages header, and the photo on the right is an example of a post that really hits many of the points that we like to promote. In the post that you see on the right, we've tagged the state of Florida, the defense, aviation, aerospace industries, the U.S. Department of Defense, Daytona State College, Flagler Technical College, and Embry-Riddle, and promoted our presence as an exhibitor at SpaceCom this January. And then we rolled all that up into a post that lists some of the reasons and strategic assets for companies to consider Palm Coast as a new location, including our strategic location on I-95, our education stakeholders, and the state's tax climate. We've also launched another first for the city with our Business Retention and Expansion Program, or BRNE Program, that is focused on strengthening the city's relationships with companies that are invested here. The main goal of the BRNE Program is to engage employers to see how things are going and see if there's any issues that the city can assist with. Examples of potential areas that we could assist with are regulations, workforce, and exporting. We've also started logging all aspects of our BRNE Program into a CRM database where we can document our touches with local employers, document project histories, and over time, really start to build up data on our industries and on our project opportunities. The importance of a BRNE Program can't be ignored, as many economic development announcements are actually expansions of existing businesses. Now, while landing a new announcement is fantastic, and it's great for headlines, business expansions are just as good because not only are new jobs typically created when a business expands, but it's also about keeping those jobs that were already in place to begin with. Additionally, expansions of existing businesses can be a great tool for recruiting because when a business expands, it sends a message of, we decided to locate in Palm Coast a while back, and it's going so well for us that now we're expanding. And over time, that's a message that's going to resonate over that company's supply chains, meaning that company's suppliers and customers, and that's going to potentially lead to recruiting opportunities down the road. Our next recent update was our September announcement that Astor Defense of the UK selected Palm Coast as their first U.S. location. As the company is an award-winning ammunition packaging manufacturer and primary supplier to several NATO countries, I love this announcement because it checked three significant boxes of being a manufacturer in the defense sector that was also foreign direct investment. Another component of the announcement that was compelling was the positive response the announcement generated from the community and from other areas online, like the defense industry and also at the state level. At the local level, many citizens approached staff, city staff, to congratulate the win and ask questions about it. And also perhaps more telling was the fact that the city made the Astor Defense announcement on a Tuesday morning. Less than 48 hours later, more than 30 people in Palm Coast had reached out to the company's offices in the UK to inquire about job opportunities. And an additional undetermined number of people had also reached out to the building's owner on Hargrave Grade to get more information about potential employment opportunities. So in my opinion, that said a lot, both the legs that the announcement had in terms of positive responses and that community enthusiasm about working there. And wrapping up this section on recent updates, last week, we hosted Palm Coast's first Workforce Development Roundtable. The roundtable brought together education partners, businesses, and workforce organizations to address gaps that local employers are currently experiencing, and for Palm Coast to begin its participation as a stakeholder in charting a course for talent development. There was a lot of great sharing of information and ideas during the two-hour meeting, and it was time well spent, according to the attendees. Workforce development is very high on my priority list, and we're going to touch on that again a few slides later. But moving forward, my office will continue to focus on building partnerships to address current workforce challenges and very much act with a deliberate intent that recognizes workforce development as a pillar that will chart the direction of the city's economic development. Moving on to next steps, some of our next steps are identified in this slide. Actually, starting backwards in the lower right-hand corner and moving up, we're going to continue working on our Business Retention and Expansion Program while also building it out in the CRM that I mentioned earlier, and will also, of course, continue as a stakeholder in our workforce development. Additionally, we're going to be focusing significantly on developing our site and building inventory and our business attraction efforts as we hopefully see more sites and buildings becoming available here. And with that, we'll take a closer look at these first two items on the slide that we see with business attraction and sites and buildings. Business attraction. As noted on the previous slide, business attraction in economic development is a multifaceted approach. There's no singular civil bullet for success, but rather that success is found through multiple methods of lead generation. The primary methods include utilizing the city's economic development website, the city's economic development LinkedIn page, both as a promotional tool and as a recruiting tool, attending trade shows that are focused on our targeted industries, tracking the news of our targeted industries, advertising and site selection publications, working with site selection consultants and commercial and industrial brokers, research and outreach based on a company's next codes, participating in industry forums and panel sessions, and then back to that BRNE Program, working with our existing companies to see if there are customers or suppliers and their supply chain that can lead to additional recruiting opportunities. However, I can't stress enough that any success in this area is going to be directly tied to having an inventory of quality sites and buildings. Wanted to point out some trade shows real quick. As a component of our business recruitment, we've begun participating in trade shows, both as an attendee and as an exhibitor. While most of the shows that you see on this slide are ones that we're considering attending in some fashion, the first one on the left, Fabtech in Orlando, we participated in as an attendee, and we're also going to participate as an exhibitor next month at SpaceCom in Orlando. And in this slide, you could see where our recruitment focus is headed from the type of shows that you see here, and that's really primarily capitalizing on the state's rapidly growing aviation, aerospace, and defense industry sector while also pursuing companies and other advanced manufacturing fields. Moving on to sites and buildings, since arriving in Palm Coast, I've been relentless in the messaging of my office's top three drivers. Sites and buildings, workforce development, and collaboration. And we're going to start by taking a brief look at these three drivers with sites and buildings. Currently, our site and building inventory is one of the main obstacles preventing progress and the city participating in project leads, creating more employment opportunities, and diversifying our tax base. It's also one of the top reasons why the city isn't experiencing the success that we've seen in the regions surrounding us. that we've seen in the region surrounding us. Now, although it's quite true that we do receive leads for projects requiring less space, a typical floor or baseline for manufacturers looking at a location is going to be 50,000 square feet. Our ability to submit sites at any given moment is limited to less than 11,000 square feet. This is a fact with only the rarest of exceptions, but an example of an exception being the 18,000-square-feet the 18,000-square-feet building on Hargrove Grade that was coming online at the exact same time that Astor Defense was looking for their U.S. location. Before jumping into this slide that we see here on Track 17, I would really like to stress to you that when we talk about sites and buildings, that strategic location and speed to market are vital to companies looking for locations. And that means at the very least, a pad-ready site in a strategic location that has utilities in place. And I say at the very least because really, in most cases, when we receive a project lead, those companies are looking for an existing building. Not all the time, but most of the time. So with that, we are facing a challenge right now with our site and building inventory. And one site that could potentially provide some relief is Track 17. We see that here on the slide, that Track 17 is 103 acres at US-1 and PV Grade, and it's city-owned. The site does have strategic assets as that it's located on a four-lane divided highway on US-1 with direct access to I-95, and across PV Grade is an FPNL substation that could supply an estimated 10 megawatts, as well as the city's water and wastewater facilities. In May 2023, the city produced three potential building layouts for Track 17. The example that we see here on this slide is a 120,000-square-foot building with two 100,000-square-foot buildings on each side. In September of 2024, the city received updated estimates to develop that parcel from two developers. The costs there ranged from almost $7 million to clear the land for what would be a 140,000-square-foot pad to almost $17 million for the option that we see here with the three buildings. Those estimates do not include the $3.5 million to $4.5 million in entitlements needed to be obtained, nor does it include the significant costs for upgrades in our water, wastewater, and even electric at that site that would be required if we were going to entertain a project with high utility demands. Additionally, there's a right of first refusal on the entire site that adds another layer of challenges to making the site become the job center that we'd like to see it become. So for now, four basic options exist for the site: maintain the status quo by not doing anything with it, sell it, pay out-of-pocket for site preparation, entitlements, and find a way to negotiate out of that right of first refusal, or right of first offer, pardon me, or enter a public-private partnership if there comes a time in the future when the city charter allows for it. I'm going to stay with the P3 example for just a minute because in March of 2022, an Atlanta-based construction firm briefly approached the city of Palm Coast regarding potential P3 agreements for developing Track 17. And one potential scenario involved the developer requesting the option to develop the entire track at an agreed-upon purchase price. Palm Coast would then lease a portion of Track 17 to the developer for essentially no cost. The developer would then prep the land and construct a building on that portion of the land that was currently being leased. And when the developer secured a buyer or tenant, that developer would then purchase that first portion from the city and then proceed with developing the next portion under a similar lease agreement. The discussion did not gain traction as the city is currently unable to enter P3s. However, even if we were able to enter P3s, it's still a little unclear on how that offer of first refusal would be resolved in that specific situation. So from an acreage standpoint, Track 17 is the largest parcel that we currently have to look at. That said, there are discussions with some developers and brokers right now about inventory that potentially could be coming online, but it's too early to say if those are discussions that would come to fruition or what they would look like. Moving on to the next pillar, workforce development. As we transition to this, not everyone understands how critical this area has become to successful economic development, but if sites and buildings is 1A on the list for what's required to be successful, then workforce development is 1B. Since arriving here, I've spent significant time and energy on trying to be a catalyst in this area. The entities that you see on the right of this slide are all entities that I've met with in person at least once, and most of the entities that you see on the right are entities that I've met with multiple times. I will point out that it's not a coincidence that over 70% of the groups that you see on this list are in education, and this list doesn't even include our other regional organizations like UNF or Embry-Riddle. As workforce development is a challenge for many employers across the U.S. and virtually every industry, there's a lot of out-of-the-box ideas getting serious looks: affordable childcare, onsite childcare, affordable housing, that's currently a big focus for us, public transportation. All of these are potential solutions that can make a difference in workforce participation. And that's why I organized a meeting with Career Source and the Sheriff's Office to see if there was any opportunities to collaborate on the Sheriff's Office's existing Second Chance Program for skills training. However, education is the biggest platform or funnel for developing workforce. And with that, the city is fortunate to have a significant number of quality education institutions within our greater region. My vision for workforce development as a component of economic development in Palm Coast is that while this is very much about identifying the challenges that our city's employers are currently working through and how us, as stakeholders, can work together to shore up those gaps, there is more to it. It's also about charting a direction for the city that includes buy-in from the citizens, the elected officials, our education partners, and the business community on exactly who we want to be in 10 years as it relates to our industries and the jobs and wages those industries provide. And it's also about developing ways to keep our youth in Palm Coast. And with that, we'll transition to the final pillar, which is collaboration, and teamwork makes the dream work. The point that I'd like to make here is that if we're asking the question, "Can the city of Palm Coast land an economic development project while working in a silo and deliberately separate from our stakeholders?" Well, the answer is yeah. The city could still land projects. But at the end of the day, are we going to be as good as we could have been had we leaned into building a strategy that includes strong collaboration with our network multipliers? And with that, I'd like to say, you know, another thing that I often say when I'm talking to people is that there's a difference between a win and success. And a win is what we got with Astor Defense, and I loved it, right? But, you know, success is really looking in the mirror saying, "This is where we want to go in 10 years with our industries, our wages, keeping our population here, and then acting on it, and then 10 years later, looking back and saying, 'You know what? We did it.'" So with that, I'll say that we need to forge a unified vision for Palm Coast that prioritizes collaboration among citizens, government, educators, and businesses, and build on-site development, education, and placemaking while implementing a forward-looking industry recruitment strategy that leverages our regional strengths, focuses on 21st-century supply chains, and generates high-quality jobs with competitive wages. So that's the end of the presentation, and happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Craig. Any questions or comments from the DIAS?
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. Craig, how are we working with our commercial realtors on the website accessibility and interactivity? And if we're not yet, or is that something that's in the pipeline?
I think you're referring to, just stop me if I'm wrong, the tech glitches that were in place when I arrived here and I was importing that new property listing page?
No, I'm not referring to anything in particular. I just want to make sure that basically FCAR can talk to us and to the website and that it's accessible in whatever way we'll work with them so that they can help us to market these properties.
So a lot to unpack there. I'll try to keep it brief. I'm not working directly with FCAR, but I'm working a lot with a lot of realtors and brokers in Florida, and that's over a pretty wide area. And my, I guess, rolodex of contacts is expanding rapidly. You said it again, and just wanted to clarify, you know, with FCAR, that there was an issue when I first came here, and I started bringing in that new property listing page where there was a lot of tech glitches that were due to FCAR switching over to stellar MLS. But to try to keep it brief and answer your question, while we're not working with FCAR, we're working a lot with commercial and industrial real estate brokers from Jacksonville down through Orlando and even further south. So although FCAR isn't in that answer, I think that I could strongly say the answer is yes, we're working a lot with commercial brokers.
Okay, great. And then my, well, and first of all, I do want to say, I appreciate your passion on this topic and how quickly and diligently you've worked. I know we've been talking about a lot of things in the economic development kind of world, and you have really put words to action, so I greatly appreciate that. I guess what I'm really looking for, high level, you know, we're going to be starting this Strategic Action Plan Priority List here and just, gosh, it's right around the corner, in another month or two. And so what I need from you, Craig, and I guess what we need from you is to know what you need from us. What do you need from us to be in our SAP? And what's the price tag associated with it? In addition to that, what is the ROI that we're looking at? I mean, are we talking, I know you and I have talked ad nauseam about the necessity for sites and buildings. And as a plug, even though people don't like to hear it, this is why the westward expansion is so important. We are out of land in Palm Coast 1.0. That is just the facts. We are out of land. We are never going to diversify our tax base if we do not expand west and allow for more commercial property to come into play. So it's really important that we focus on the positive aspect of the westward expansion in the commercial piece of this because as we look to expand west, we need to make sure that we have industrial sites, that we have a lot of commercial because we just, we're out of land in current Palm Coast. So, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is what can we do as a part of our Strategic Action Plan? And I don't need an answer from you now, but I think that it's definitely worthy of coming back to council with because you have this list of next steps, you know, with regards to site and building development, business retention, business attraction. But, you know, if you could narrow it down to, what are the top three things that we can do to improve our economic development in the next two years, the next five years, and the next 10 years? What's the price tag associated with that? And what's the ROI? Because we need to, we as council need to be able to budget to invest in the economic development of Palm Coast.
Okay, so thank you, right, and a lot to unpack there. I'll try to keep it concise. Absolutely right. The main problem is that we are landlocked right now. And so with that, we're really trying to comb through, very much trying to comb through, you know, what can we produce within the current map borders? In terms of what I need from you, you know, simply, right, we've got to put our heads together and, you know, really figure out, you know, either land in our existing map that we can convert or acquire other land, whatever that looks like. That's where I need the help. On that note, right, so what I need is sites and buildings, right? But on that note, I really do want to stress, and this isn't just for the sake of saying it, that in order to get where we want to go, there is a quality aspect to sites and buildings. It's about that strategic location. It's about that access to 95, right? It's about having the utilities ready to go. And, you know, if we fall short of that, then we're going to fall short of the results that we're looking for because the name of the game right now in economic development, sites and buildings, right? I think a lot of people are here to say it now, but, right, sites and buildings, workforce development. I'm really glad you touched on the ROI. You know, I'm pretty transparent. A lot of people know that now. You know, there's no defined ROI in either, you know, something that the city does or that a private developer does for a lot of reasons. One, there's not a line, it's not linear, between the amount of square feet a building has and the number of jobs that it creates. So let's just take a 100,000-square-foot building, right? A project there, I mean, it could be 75 jobs. It could be 250 jobs, right? So that ROI is hard to determine. Another thing, right, that we should get ahead of in terms of conversation is that, you know, it's not, or it might not be a situation where, you know, we build it, right? And then next month, right, we've got to take her, right? It could be a lot longer than that, right? A lot of things outside of control, outside of our control, are going to dictate that. But one thing we could take to the bank is if we don't get some sites and buildings up online, right, we're not going to create the jobs, you know, whether it takes three months or a year and a half, right, to get someone in there. And if we don't get serious about our sites and buildings, then in 16 months from now, you know, a lot of people are going to be having the same conversation, like, "What are we going to do about our economic development?" Right? But we've got to get the sites and buildings.
I want to stop you really quickly right there because I think it's really important. Again, I'm going to bring up a topic that people don't like to discuss, but it's a necessity to discuss it, is the Charter Amendment, not with regards to borrowing, but with regards to P3s. We are handcuffed largely, you said it in your presentation. We have to have the ability to enter into public-private partnerships in a big way. And we are never going to go bring our city to the next level as far as what we can bring in for income, you know, diversification of income to the city. And we're going to be having the same conversations every single year about cutting services so that we can reduce taxes or increasing taxes because we need more services if we do not start to diversify our tax base with economic development. And in order to take us to the next step, we're going to have to be able to figure out how to enter into public-private partnerships. So I don't know, I'm not looking for any type of discussion from city council on this topic right now. And I don't want to derail the presentation on that, but I think that it's very important that we all kind of keep that in mind that while we have this very large stigma that came along with the Charter Amendment, there does need to be a Charter Amendment with regards to our ability to enter into P3s. And I think that this presentation makes that very clear.
And one other thing, before we get into, you know, additional questions that I wanted to say is that, you know, as it relates to timelines, et cetera, you know, we can unlock a solution today, right? Probably not going to happen, but let's say that we did. You know, it's still going to take months, right, for that solution to come online as it relates to site prep, utilities, et cetera. And while I am a big believer in the saying that opportunities are like buses, Uh, and while I am a big believer in the saying that opportunities are like buses, when one's leaving town, another one's pulling up, you know, the truth is, is that we have missed a tremendous amount of opportunity, uh, as it relates to projects coming to the state of Florida. And on our focus, right, uh, of advanced manufacturing, but especially in that aviation, aerospace, defense sector, I don't want to call, I don't want to say that there's, that the opportunities are finite, uh, but it is a different sector, right? It's high capex and a small amount of product, right? And so it's not the same as if we were in a automotive state, you know, recruiting a automotive OEM to come in because the cars are always being churned out and purchased. Uh, so, you know, we do want to take action. Uh, we want to try to move with speed. Uh, but we really want to keep our eye on the ball of putting the best up there that we possibly can because we're going to be competing against other sites in Florida and we're going to be competing against other states. And on that topic of aviation, aerospace and defense, right, uh, this isn't anything new that I'm coming up with, okay? Every economic development office in the state of Florida, right, is looking at the activity that the state is seeing and they're saying, hey, we want to get in on that too. And so on that, we've got to be competitive. It's a contact sport.
Good, Teresa? Teresa, you there?
Yes, mayor, thank you.
You're good?
Yeah, thank you.
Got your honor.
Greg, uh, thanks for your presentation. I think it's, uh, you'd be hit the, the nail right on the head. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for the, the updates you've made to the website as, uh, as we've discussed, um, you know, I'm, I'm engaging with defense sector CEOs and that we, they've actually, the feedback's been really good, you know? Just the overall general information, but also, hey, what, what incentives can, can the city give, you know, provide me as I consider to move my business to, to Palm Coast? But also, you know, what grants and things of that nature that, that are also available out there? So, I, I think that, um, that's awesome. And, you know, Astra Defense makes a whole lot of sense, right? They do the packaging for a lot of our defense sector, right? We've got North of Grubin, uh, General Dynamics, all here in Florida, Lockheed Martin, we've got, uh, the Niceville facility, um, um, moving forward. And I will tell you, as an Army guy, you know, we have lost the art of being able to make TNT, you know, weapons-grade TNT for, for the Army, just like other stuff that's gone to China, right? Pharmaceuticals, things of that nature. The US Army, I would say, in the very near future is going to be moving towards figuring out places on where they can produce TNT and these, these large munitions to bring our stockpiles back up. We need to capitalize on that.
Yes, sir. And on that note, actually, my former employer, uh, just announced the first TNT production facility in the United States, and I think 40 years if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so it's, it's moving in that direction.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And, and, and there's, there's only two big contractors that do it, General Dynamics and I think Global Ordnance and others. But in any case, um, I'm on the hunt to help out with that. And, you know, as we discussed, as I said, use me as a weapon system to, to get after, uh, engaging with CEOs. Um, with regards to, to other manufacturing, and I guess this is still kind of in the defense sector. You know, Brevard County, I think, is an, an excellent example. And the cities within Brevard County, County are an excellent example of how they courted the space in the fence industry. Obviously, space with the Kennedy Space Center there makes a whole lot of sense. But if you go down to Cocoa Beach, for example, there is, um, there's, there's a slew of, of weapons manufacturers. And when I say weapons manufacturers, you know, I'm talking Caltech, Diamondback, Lift Free Armory, you know, AR-15 makers, pistol makers, and they machine all that stuff themselves. These are skilled, uh, uh, jobs that they're providing for the community. So, I'm not sure what incentives they, they, they put forward, um, uh, but, you know, with the consensus of the board, I think it'd be interesting to kind of benchmark to see what Brevard County did, given the, the space that they had, uh, to, to be able to bring those kind of manufacturing jobs, uh, into their community. And then, you know, how they tied that workforce development, that pipeline with, with, um, you know, the local, you know, educational institutions. Um, and so I, I think that's incredibly important. And then, uh, you know, to echo the vice mayor's comments, I think, you know, we only have so much land and we've got to, um, we've got to look at these, these other options. But always, 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 you know, it's got to be what's the best interest of the city, not, not anybody else, you know, the citizens. So, um, thanks for all your work doing that. I look forward to collaborating with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Me too.
Ray, you got anything?
Yeah, just, uh, out of curiosity, how much to your knowledge property is available on Hard Grove Grade?
Not a bit, really. Not much, but, uh, on that note, we actually have a meeting, uh, coming up regarding, uh, a site at the end of Hard Grove Grade, uh, that we haven't had yet, so, uh, not quite sure how that's going to play out. Uh, but I reached out to a senior VP of JLL who was, uh, repping the seller. And, uh, they had a site map, uh, for that, uh, that was a few spec buildings, several spec buildings, uh, that ranged between 10,000 and 30,000 square feet and a lot of luxury car condos. Uh, and I think, uh, we're going to have a productive conversation about what, uh, taking that lot on Hard Grove Grade, uh, and getting that, uh, presented as strictly, uh, as an industrial opportunity, uh, would look like. Uh, you know, Hard Grove Grade, again, we don't have a lot of options, like you said, right? So, what are we talking about, right? We're landlocked, so what's going on with Hard Grove Grade? Uh, one good thing about that Astor Defense announcement, uh, is that when the project came across my desk, uh, I recognized immediately, uh, from my previous experience, that natural gas, uh, was going to be the driver, uh, of their energy needs and not electric. Uh, and that natural gas doesn't run down Hard Grove Grade currently, and I didn't want to lose that project. Uh, so I rang the bell pretty hard at TECO and, uh, we've got natural gas that is going to be extended from US1 all the way down Hard Grove Grade now. Uh, so that was another benefit of the Astor Defense announcement. Uh, but certainly, uh, to answer your question, uh, Councilman Stevens, uh, I think that, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that site layout of the multiple spec buildings, flex building, luxury car condos, I think they had, uh, a total building space of about 230,000 square feet across multiple buildings. Uh, so that could hopefully, uh, be a nice opportunity, uh, for us after we meet with JLL. And, uh, in that meeting with JLL, JLL will also be meeting actually with, uh, their client who owns the property. So, hopefully a lot of room for collaboration there, uh, and kind of flipping, uh, the intent of what that lot could be used for.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You got anything, Paul?
Yeah, just wanted to thank you for the presentation and then, um, echo what, uh, Councilwoman Pontieri said, as well as Councilman Gembaro about the P3s and, uh, them being kind of a tool in the toolbox. Councilman Gembaro mentioned incentives and, and how, uh, different areas we're able to bring in. Not having that is, um, definitely kind of having, uh, one arm tied behind our back here in terms of, uh, comparisons between us and other areas. So, um, you know, for everybody out there that, that wants more, uh, economic development, commercial to ease the tax burden, um, for citizens, um, understand that this is, this is something that we need as a city in order to go forward, uh, with these types of partnerships.
And, uh, and on that note, real quick, uh, I had produced a document, uh, that I didn't quite get it, uh, the, the way I wanted to. I'm kind of a perfectionist. Uh, but, you know, anyone can do a, a simple Google search, uh, and see the amount of energy, intent, money, whatever you want to call it, that other communities and other states across the US are putting into getting, uh, pad-ready sites or, uh, existing buildings. Because they recognize that, hey, we're not going to get in play for the project, you know, even if we don't get the project, we're not even going to get in play if we don't have a site and building to recruit it to. So, uh, I'm happy to share that document, uh, but, you know, it's just really a lot of examples, a lot of quotes, uh, a, about the intent across the US right now, uh, from states, from communities, about getting sites and buildings up online and, and seizing the opportunity.
Okay, um, just for all of us here, uh, Teresa, you still there, right? Teresa?
I am, mayor. I apologize for delay. I'm a little off mute, but, uh, yeah, I, I, I'm here.
Okay, we had that, we've had this conversation before the election. Uh, I, I am aware that we're going to have to amend, uh, the charter to allow for higher, higher borrowing power because of inflation. We need to equate for that. And we do need those P3, uh, partnerships. So, I think we can, uh, we need to start looking forward, city manager on trying to facilitate that in the future, uh, maybe not in the interim, but, you know, going forward. Uh, so, sites and buildings, sites and buildings. Greg, he's, he's preaching that. We have a meeting this afternoon, I think 3:00 PM, with stakeholders within the community, some of the major property owners. And we have to sell, hey, we need these properties to bring industries in here. So, that's what we're going to be pushing for today. At 1:00, that's why we need to get out of here before 1:00, I have a meeting with, uh, someone that wants to do business in the city. And, and it's hard for me to go to them and say, hey, I want you to do business in our city, but I don't have land for you. That's an issue. And these people are be, going to be a company by an international, uh, newspaper to interview me and talk about our city and bring an industry in here. So, we need to focus on getting sites and buildings, sites and buildings. And, um, uh, Track 17 is, is an excellent, we'll be having that discussion today. Um, what's that address for Astra out on Hard Grove, Craig? You know, the-
Yes, about the address?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe it's 15 Hard Grove. If I'm wrong, it's 18.
Okay.
But I think it's 15 Hard Grove.
Okay, I went out there yesterday to visit a building that I actually worked on with my business when it was, when it was framed out. The gentleman that built the building asked me to come out and pressure clean all the, uh, all the I-beams for the, for the frame of the building. And I did it. I spent like eight hours on a lift, pressure cleaning that building. Uh, yesterday I went out there to visit, uh, Mario from, uh, King's Automotive Detailing. That building is phenomenal. His, it's been, uh, sectioned off. He's got his shop with a roll-up door and the, the building looks great. And that's small businesses working together, you know? Uh, the gentleman, John, built the building. He asked me to come in and pressure, pressure wash the I-beams for him. Uh, he, he floored it out, rented it out. Now you've got these businesses in there that are trying to get up and running. And I'm going to be doing that every week, trying to spotlight a new business in the community, trying to give them, show them some love. But we have, we have to lean forward specifically on the P3, being able to do P3s, increasing our borrowing limit for, um, uh, just to equate for inflation. Um, like I said, I'm meeting with the stake, we're meeting with the stakeholders today, Craig, um, and I'm meeting with someone that wants to do business in our, our city. So, we have to do everything possible to bring jobs and industry in this community and specifically, uh, develop our workforce and our ki, have our kids to have somewhere to work when they come out of high school if they're not, you know, if they're not moving out of the area. So, um, I'm excited. I'm excited and I'm ready for us to get to work. Any more discussion from the DIAS?
I, I just want to reiterate that, that, that's why I brought up Hard Grove Grade. It's there. Roads are in. Most of it is cleared. Um, that's why I was, uh, inquiring as to how much acreage is there and what kind of buildings could be put up. But it, and it is conveniently located. It is very close to one. You can, you could go to 95 North. You don't have to go through Palm Coast, down, uh, on Palm Coast Parkway, which is already overcrowded. And you can go south towards, uh, Ormond Beach, et cetera, et cetera. So, that, that's why I thought that that was, uh, a, a good starting, a good starting point for, for, for land and buildings.
I, I took a picture of a For Sale sign out there too, and it says industrial zoning, Craig. It's, it's more west of the 25 address, but it's being listed by, um, um, the last name is Rose. It is team to FAL. I don't know, maybe you could do some research on that site too.
Send, send it over my way. I'm happy to research it. Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, I'll open, any, any more comments?
Ju- ju- just one other comment, right? Uh, uh, I, Councilman Stevens, I can't remember exactly what you just said that kind of triggered it. Uh, but you know what? I mean, we are in a good position, right? The busiest interstate on the east coast of the United States cuts right through us. Uh, we're anchored, uh, by Fantastic Beach and we've got a high quality of life here. And we're in the hotbed of the aviation, arrow and defense industry. Uh, so you know what? We've got a lot of built-in selling points that a lot of communities, you know, uh, would chop off their arm to have assets like we have. But we got to get those sites and buildings up and capitalize on it.
Full court press, full court press.
Yeah, just, um, mayor, I'm sorry, I just have one more comment. Um, and I, I just want to leave, um, Craig, you with this. I agree, uh, with your last comment there, mayor. Full court press, uh, definitely. We have to, we have to parlay this though into SAP. How are we going to make economic development a strategic action priority? And what does that look like from a financial standpoint? Because we cannot, we can't, you know, formulate our budget without knowing what this investment is going to cost. And we don't know what that cost is going to be and what those both short-term and long-term plays are without suggestions from our expert on this, which is Craig. So, you know, this is a great presentation and I'm, I'm glad we had it, obviously have some great stuff, but we need action items and we need dollars associated with those action items. So, that's what I'll look forward to from staff as we get into our SAP.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Uh, uh, nothing else from the DIAS. I'll open it up for public comments. Steve, you got anything to say? Steve had, oh, I guess he does. Come on up, Stevie.
Yeah, Steve Carr, Palm Coast, this was a great, uh, discussion and, uh, and I, it looks like the city's headed in the right direction. And then I love the questions y'all are asking and I love, I really did like the presentation. It, it, it's gotten us to look into the proper, proper way to go and what direction we really need to go. So, I want to say I'm, I'm impressed with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we're going to close, that, that, that item is done. We're going to move the, uh, Echo Six or E6, city manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor and city council. Um, city attorney, Mr. Duffy, is going to present to you your city council policies and procedures. This was, um, discussed at your meeting on November 19th. Uh, staff is here to, um, take any direction on any changes that you would like to see in your upcoming, uh, policies and procedures.
Okay, before you move forward, Mr. Duffy, uh, Teresa, uh, are you going to be able to stay on the line because I may have to leave before the end of the meeting?
I am, yes. I'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, if you do have to leave before the meeting, Ms. Pontieri wouldn't be able to chair the meeting because she's not here physically, so it would go to the next senior, uh, council member, which would be Councilmember Gembaro.
Okay, that's fine.
Just wanted to make sure we're on-
That's fine, as long as I can get to that meeting because I'm, I'm really excited about talking to those folks.
All right, let me make sure I'm doing this right. I apologize if I screw anything up. All right, I think we're good to go. All right, so, uh, city attorney Mark Duffy here, putting some, uh, presentations on, as directed by city council for, like, uh, policies and procedures. So, this is just a little update and kind of get direction on where you as a council would like to go with your own, uh, policies and procedures. So, this is kind of the items we're discussing, just governing the rules, uh, responsibilities and roles in meetings, and then rules of debate, uh, business meeting workshops, agenda, and then updating these policies. So, these are how the rules are governed. It's, you know, by our policies, procedures, Robert's Rules of Order Revised, I think the current edition is the 12th edition, and then obviously the Sunshine Law, Chapter 286 in Florida statute. And if you guys have any questions at all, please feel free. This is supposed to be conversational. Stop me anytime and we, we can talk about it. So, rules and responsibilities. As the mayor, uh, he is the chair of the meeting. So, he opens the meeting, calls in the order, recognizes all city councils, city managers, city attorney, uh, and then preserves decorum and order. So, kind of, uh, the best way to sum this up, the mayor is kind of the referee for the meeting. He is supposed to be objective through the meeting, still gets the vote on, uh, different motions and stuff like that, but he is kind of the referee, being objective, making sure everyone stays in order. Uh, expedite business in any way cap, uh, capable, uh, for the rights of members, uh, and then declare the meeting adjourned. So, like I just said, uh, if the mayor makes a motion, the gavel must be relinquished and the gavel shall be relinquished in the following order, A to the vice mayor or B to the other city council members based upon seniority if the vice mayor is not here or is not able to take up that role for some reason. So, vice mayor's role and responsibility, uh, is pretty much in the absence of the mayor is, is the mayor, takes over those responsibilities, performs all those duties on, uh, and including is presiding over the, uh, this meeting until the mayor is able to recover or resumption of the duty. So, your roles as city council members is that, uh, you, you can, you can speak, but you, before speaking, you should be get, uh, almost a floor permission from the mayor. So, like you guys have been already doing, the practice, saying, uh, you, you ask the mayor for the floor and then once being recognized by the mayor, then you have the floor until you seek speaking. And once you're, you're done with your area, uh, you, you pretty much give the floor back to the mayor. But while you're speaking, you should not be interrupted or anything like that. Mostly, these meetings are supposed to be when someone is speaking, no one should be interrupting and no one should be talking over each other. It should be one person at a time. Uh, at the end of it, that helps out our city clerk when she's making our minutes. Uh, it makes life a little easier. Uh, and, and your city council policies, procedures is, uh, says that council members shall refrain from attacking motives, uh, speaking adversity on prior motions not pending, and then, you know, speaking while the mayor or other city council members are, are speaking. Uh, and then, uh, key thing that I put in here, are expressly prohibited from interfering with the performance of the duties of any city employee who's under the direct or indirect supervision of the city manager. So, you guys make policy, city manager directs that policy to her staff. So, rules, responsibilities, uh, and these are all in the policies and procedures, uh, of the city manager. Direct, supervises the administration of all departments, offices and agencies of the city, prepares and place items on the agenda three days before the meeting. And then, uh, if there is a public inquiry form, which is where there's someone in the audience wants to put something for public comment or wants to put something in that she, they want an answer, that goes to the city manager and the city manager tries to address that. And then also, if there's ever a quasi judicial hearing and needs to be continued, it first goes to the city manager and she makes that decision of the first continuance. City clerk's roles is prepare and provide agenda packets to the city council and public, prepare the minutes for these meetings and then records the votes, uh, and announce them. Uh, city attorney is, serves as a parliamentary for these meetings, advise and assist the mayor in the matter of that area, and then absent if there's some- mayor in the matter of that area, and then absent if there's some type of policy procedure that does not cover a certain area, the City Attorney helps the mayor and the council through those issues. So agenda, this is how, uh, according to your policies and procedures, agendas are pretty much made, and then there's an official agenda for every meeting that determines the order of the business. All proceedings and the order of business at all meetings of the City Council shall be conducted in accordance with that official agenda. The agenda is prepared by the City Manager. Any departure from the agenda shall be made only by the mayor or upon a motion and consent of the majority of the City Council members present. Matters may be placed on the agenda by the City Manager or by any member of City Council. If a City Council member wishes to place a matter on the agenda, the City Council member shall raise that man, matter and get a motion, or get a consent or majority from the rest. Not one member can unilaterally add something to the, the agenda without a majority permission from council. So updates, so, uh, there was a case out of the, uh, US District, Mid District of Florida, Moms of, uh, for Liberty, uh, of Brevard County versus, uh, Brevard Public School System. And in that case, uh, the judge ruled that policies and procedures can no longer restrict public comment only to the chair of meetings. So a, probably, uh, before December, it said in, um, and it currently says in our policies and procedures, but we have not practiced, because we have case law now says we can't. But yeah, the prior mayor, where you, when you, uh, would issue your kind of instructions for public comment at the start, like Mayor Norris did today, he would say, hey, please direct all your comments to me. That is no longer the case, and now it has to be that if someone does have some type of comment, they can direct it straight to the mayor, or they can direct it straightly to the entire council, and the council can respond. Uh, any questions on that? All right. So, these are, I, the next two slides are some suggestive changes that go, reviewing your policies and procedures that I think should be brought up. So, the two sections here, it's Section 3 with quorum, uh, Section D and Section E. The highlighted sections, to me personally, I think conflict with each other. Mainly, my, my, my main thing is, uh, between the loss and quorum and no quorum. So Section D, it kinda deals with, hey, we're already in a meeting, and three of the council meeting, council members have to leave for some reason, you only have two left, no longer have quorum, all right? The, the Section E is dealing with no quorum, where you don't have enough to start a meeting. My, my kind of, uh, conflict here is that the highlighted part of Section E says, no further official action may be taken until or unless a quorum is restored, uh, than German. I interpret a official action of some type of motion and vote. I don't interpret official action of like, uh, a council giving direction or something like that. So, uh, this is where I get conflicted here, E, no quorum, it says, or upon a meeting, meeting having commenced with a quorum, which quorum has been lost, the mayor or vice mayor or in their absence, another city council member shall adjourn the meeting. So, like today, we had a couple items that you guys did not take any official action. If you only go by E, theoretically, you would have to stop the meeting and adjourn, and we would not be able to get to those items if, say, we didn't have a quorum in the middle of, of a meeting, because some people had an emergency and had to leave. If we go strictly by D, I would interpret like, no, the meeting can still go, we're just not gonna take any official action, and business can go as, as, as follows. Uh, that's kinda my thing, is I would recommend that we delete the portion from E, it says, or upon a meeting having commenced with a quorum, which quorum has been lost, delete that part and just keep Section D, so that you can still continue to have a meeting if quorum is lost, but you can't take any official action, like no votes can be taken or anything like that. Uh, any questions on that part?
Can we get consensus, can we ask for that now?
Yeah, 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 this is, the part of this, yeah.
Can we ask for consensus on that? Everybody agree with, uh, deleting that line that he has highlighted in E?
Yes, sir.
What about you, Teresa? You good with that?
That's fine, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, we're good. Marcus, carry on.
And then the next one, so special meetings, so, and your, uh, policy procedures says, section, in this section, uh, a special meeting, a special meeting of the City Council may be called by the City Manager, the mayor, or by a majority of the members of a City Council at a City Council meeting. So, uh, it would be my recommendation to delete that last part at a City Council meeting for if a majority of members feel like they need to call a special meeting, it doesn't have to be done in a special, at a council meeting. Because in that situation, uh, say it's, we're in this, uh, let's see, our next meeting is next Tuesday, and then someone wants to call a special meeting by the, the following Thursday, and the mayor doesn't want to, or the City Manager doesn't think the need, but the other, the majority of council wants to, they cannot, according to this policy procedure, they would not be able to call a special meeting until we get to the next meeting, which is not till January, and then from that meeting, call a special meeting. If a majority of this council thinks that there should be one, we delete that section, and they can say, uh, they, they can do through arrangements with me or the City Manager, they go, they say, no, uh, we would like to have a special meeting, uh, by majority, by us having discussions. Does that make sense? Am I confusing it?
Uh, anybody have any issue with that?
Yeah, I think you, you clarified. My, my question would be, what would be the mechanism of calling for a meeting amongst a majority when, you know, we don't typically interact a lot because of sunshine laws and things like that? So, that clears it up for me.
Anyone else have any discussion on that? We have a consensus? Uh, Teresa, you good with that too?
I am, and I thank you, Marcus, for adding this, because, uh, we had an issue with this a few months ago, and, um, I had this in my notes to have edited, so I definitely think that this should be an edit we make.
Okay, you have direction on that, Marcus, next.
All right, and then, this is the last, the last part, it was just based on qua, uh, prior discussions with you guys. Uh, discussion about current agenda format, I believe that there was some type of, uh, brought up about proclamations being at certain times, uh, the times of the meetings, awards, and any other things. I had this in the area for, uh, we could add stuff, or, uh, this is just discussions, just that, do we wanna add anything? Do, uh, this is where you can say, we'd like to add a fourth meeting, something like that. Not putting words in your mouth, just remember what our discussions were.
You done? You done?
Yes, sir.
So what, what the suggestion, suggestion of the, the previous council was to add another meeting and make it another 6:00 PM meeting, was that the, was that the, the basic thing there, Lauren?
Uh, yes, there was a request to add an additional workshop. I don't think they had quite direction on the time, um, and then it didn't get finalized. So, we've historically had a, um, fourth workshop during the budget process.
Yes.
Uh, and it's been at 9:00 AM, and they've been specific to budget or strategic action plan related items only. So this is to permanently add a fourth workshop, and then the time would be up to your pleasure.
Well, uh, we all knew that, well, we all know that one of the biggest push from the, the citizens was, look at the room right now, more night meetings, so I would suggest if we, we add a fourth meeting, that it be a night meeting. I don't know if I can get consensus on that, but that's what, that, that way you're splitting it, that people can't complain, well, most of your meetings during the day, well, 50% in the day, 50% at night.
I agree, Mayor, um, you know, if we're, you know, my argument for changing the times at si, to 6:00 PM was that we have kind of half and half, um, it accommodates different schedules. I, I agree that, you know, potentially adding a 6:00 PM workshop would, would follow that same logic.
So, can I get consensus for that, the adding a 6:00 PM, uh, council workshop?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay.
Comment, is that, is that gonna be just during, uh, the budget preparation period?
No, that will, I'm sorry.
Or that be all for, for all time?
That would be for all time, um, Councilmember Stevens. It wouldn't be, um, exclusive to just budget items, we would have a mixed agenda.
So, uh, yeah, I remember having all those, those special workshops for the budget and all that stuff leading up to, it's just renaming them, just having the times, right? So you have night, day, night, day, or whatever, two in between, whatever way they fall on the calendar.
Right, as we start to navigate the budget process, if the agendas are getting, um, too lengthy, then we can talk about adding, um, a, an additional budget workshop, um, to your calendar, but this would, this fourth workshop would be on any items that are gonna be on your future agenda.
Okay, and do we have enough city business and issues that we're not creating an, another meeting for no reason, just?
Um, I believe we do. The workshops are for your benefit, right, there to, for you guys to work through the items, give staff direction, and then upon your business meeting, you're hear, um, hearing public comment and then taking a vote.
Taking votes, taking care of the city's business. So everybody's got, everybody's good with that? I have consensus?
I'm not. I, I don't think we should have another meeting, four meetings a month, uh, in, including, uh, that's not including special workshops, uh, I think that we're spreading it a little too thin. That's just my opinion.
No, nothing would change as far, just the naming of the meetings as, as far as special workshops and stuff, Ray, is not. Am I correct? That's what?
It, it really depends on the way council wants to navigate the, the budget process. So, in the past, we haven't had a fourth workshop, so we've added one just specifically on business, um, or on the budget. So this would be a fourth workshop on just business items, and then as we navigate the future budget process, we could add it and it be a mixed, um, mixed agenda, or we can hold special budget workshops in the future. It really just depends on how complex the presentations get, and, um, your, it's really the commitment of your time.
Can I jump in here for just a moment? I might be able to add some, um, historical context to this, um, to, to alleviate some of your concerns, Councilwoman Stevens, because I, I hear your concern, I, I think I hear that, oh, well, what, if we add a, a, another workshop, then we have a budget workshop on top of that, so now we're looking at five meetings or even maybe six meetings a month. I don't envision this being that way. So, in the past, when we've had that fourth workshop, it has only been budget focused. Um, my suggestion is that, as Lauren just said, we, we continue, we add a fourth workshop, and I, and I have a suggestion for items that I think need to be added to those workshops that I'll get to in a minute, but we add that fourth workshop even in when we're not in budget cycle, but when we are in budget cycle, we're not creating another special workshop for the budget, rather, we're just including that budget, those budget topics to be discussed during what I, what, what is already that fourth workshop time slot. So, we could, there could be other items that are included on that workshop, but it's not just a quote, "special budget" meeting, it's just now we can have the, the budget discussion during that fourth workshop time, if that makes sense.
Okay, so.
In addition, I think that what, what we had previously been advised by legal counsel, not, not by Marcus, but, um, with regards to whether or not certain variances and, uh, development requests could come before council at a workshop, we were previously advised that that could not happen, that is incorrect. Um, we can have workshops on, let's say that somebody, a developer comes to us and wants to increase their density from what has already been approved, I think that those things need to be workshopped. Um, in the past, they've come to us on ordinance first read, and that's it, so we get blindsided with, I mean, sometimes hundreds of pages of current DRIs that we are then expected to consume, make changes on the spot to the ordinance, and then bring back for a second read. It's my opinion that these items are too important for our city, especially as we move west, and so, anything, in my opinion, that comes before us from a development standpoint, where they're asking for any type of variance that is not already included, so if they're trying to change residential to commercial, if they're trying to increase residential units, um, density, anything like that, any type of requested change needs to be workshopped by this council prior to going to an ordinance first read.
Okay, uh, the bottom line is, then we're, the, the intention here is to increase the number of meetings from three to four a month, period. Am I, am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes, but it gives us more time to take care of, um, city issues.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I can comment, I would look at it like, if we are accomplishing 20 hours of work with three meetings, so we're gonna be here for six and a half hours each meeting, we add the fourth, it's spreading that out a little bit more, so we're not here for a long period of time, there's certain fatigue that sets in, people make less good decisions when you've been sitting here for six or seven hours. Um, it, it just makes it easier on everybody, I think, instead of having these marathon sessions. So, uh, not more time, just spread out a little bit more.
Okay, so we, we have consensus, well, we have enough to proceed anyway, so we'll move forward with that. Are we good, Marcus?
Just wanna make sure we get direction, you want a fourth workshop, okay, at night?
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM, okay.
Two and two. Um, uh, let's pause for a second, I'm, I'm gonna have to leave. Uh, these are two things, and you have enough people to vote and make a decision on whatever you wanna do, uh, but, uh, discussions with Lauren and, uh, Marcus.
Mr. Mayor, you would have to, you still have public comment left.
Okay, well, this is, you, let, once we finish this, we'll do public comment. Oh, on that specific topic?
Uh, no, not on this particular, but you have your public comment for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, so, two things that I would like, after discussion with, uh, Marcus and, and Lauren is, um, during the business meetings, having public comment at the end, so we can take care of city business, and then if we run late, because we have the, what is it called, Marcus? When it's getting late, what is it called?
You're getting to a, well, you're talking about the timing?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there, in your public, in your policy procedures, you have a timing where you can't go past, I believe it's 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock, so when we get closer to 11, I'd rather have taken care of public business, uh, city business up front, and if we have to cut shorter, be co, uh, public comments at the end. Uh, the, what was the other thing I wanted to cover?
Proclamations.
Oh, proclamations, thank you, Ray. We didn't violate sunshine, he's just thinking the same thing. Um, uh, adding an extra 30 minutes on those days or nights that we have proclamations, was adding 30 minutes, if you guys can come to a consensus on that, uh, adding an extra 30 minutes, that way people are not extended here when they wanna be here for the city business. Um, so.
So, just so that I'm clear on the direction, you would like us to revise the ordinance for setting your meeting times, your business meeting times, because we do not do proclamations during workshops, um, an extra 30 minutes on those times that we have proclamations.
Yes.
So, so your morning meetings would start at 8:30, and your evening meetings would start at 5:30?
We do proclamations at both different types of meetings, or just one singular type?
No, there, there are proclamations on the first and third business meeting.
Okay, I don't think anybody wants to start a business meeting at eight, oh, a business meeting at 8:30, but, uh, you're more than welcome to work it out. You, you guys think you can handle that? I don't wanna miss this meeting, I'm sorry. It's kinda important.
Yeah, so, and so, uh, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up, you're, you're good. Uh, he's passing the gavel to you.
Got it, Charlie.
Uh, so then, so the two things that he brought up is moving, uh, non-agenda public comment, not, we have two right now, we have one at the start and one at the end, moving that only to the end. All right, and then proclamations and awards, uh, adding 5:30 times, is that what you're, you're getting, Lauren?
That's what I heard, um, and, but keep the nine P, 9:00 AM meetings 9:00 AM.
Yes.
Okay.
If I can pop in here, I don't, I don't have an issue with the proclamation start, I don't have an issue starting either meeting 30 minutes early, so it's whatever the consensus from my colleagues is, but I do have an issue pushing public comment to the end of the meetings, particularly for the night meetings, and even the day meetings, to be quite honest. I mean, uh, the last council added public comment because the public wanted that, they were very vocal about that. Um, I, if, if we, if we push public comment to the end of public meetings, we are precluding a lot of people from being able to make public comment, because as I've advocated for previously, specifically with regards to the meeting times, we have a large elderly population that, uh, cannot drive at night and cannot stay for some of these marathon meetings. So if we push public comment just until the end, we're disallowing a lot of people to make public comment. If, I think what could accomplish the mayor's, um, goal in getting to city business quicker is limiting, like the county does, limiting the public comment, um, at the beginning and at the end to 30 minutes. Uh, we're, we don't really see this as an issue very often, until it comes to, uh, the ad valorem, setting the ad valorem rate, um, or just really controversial issues, and those are oftentimes agenda items, so it really isn't too much of an issue, but i- if we are trying to accomplish what I think the mayor was going for, then maybe we limit the public comment on non-agenda items at the beginning and end to 30 minutes. But I don't want to push public comment that's at the beginning of the meetings just until the end.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Teresa. Um, so I was gonna ask, is that, uh, the 30 minutes, is that the standard that the, the county uses as well?
Yes.
Is that, that's correct? Okay. So I have no problem with that as well, just limiting it so that, you know, we can get on to business. You know, sometimes the marathon of the meeting is the public commentary, so, and I certainly don't want to limit someone's ability to speak about issues that's important, to hear what the public thinks, but also, we need to find some happy medium to, to kind of make these, these meetings more streamlined and efficient.
Any thoughts on the vice mayor's recommendation?
Well, my concern is that, you know, you, you limit somebody to 30 minutes, or, I mean, a public comment to 30 minutes, and you, and you have 15 people didn't get an opportunity to speak, then they're going to have to speak at the end of the meeting, and that's kind of, I don't know, does this require some sort of a change in the policy or procedures, or can we just try it, see how it works?
That would, yeah, so this is, currently, your policy procedures have no time limits, it's just you have non-agenda public item at the front and at the back, so this, if you guys wanted to do this, you would amend your policy procedures. If you want to try it out, I guess you could do that, and then you say, this is not working, someone brings it up again, and then you would amend them again.
Yeah, I'll go for that.
Okay.
Okay, and that would be done by res, by resolution, correct?
Yeah.
Not, not in ordinance read?
Uh, actually, wait, one second, let me, I think, oh, I want to double check on that.
Okay.
Let me just try, double check on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a technicality, but, okay. All right. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none. Discussion by, so item G, discussion by city council members, not on the agenda, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Gambaro, I do have some questions for Marcus, just some language that's in the current policies and procedures, but I think can be shored up to be a little more clear.
Of course.
I, I, I think that currently, we are incorrectly using meeting and workshop interchangeably, or sometimes referencing a meeting when, when it might include a workshop, so it's just really unclear. So I, what I would ask, Marcus, is that you look through the policies and procedures to make sure it's very clear whether or not, whenever a meeting quote is referenced, it is including a workshop and a meeting, or it's just a business meeting. And this is particularly important, call, Councilman, with regards to kind of reversing a decision. So right now, if there's a vote, our policies and procedures say that at the next quote "meeting," a reversal of that vote can be done, but only by somebody who was in the, I guess, the winning side of that vote previously. There's been some discussion as to whether or not that particular policy and procedure means the next business meeting, or the next workshop. And that's just one example, and that, that's very important, that distinction. So I, just for peace of mind, would like to make sure that throughout our policies and procedures, we're being very clear as to whether or not, when we say "meeting" in the procedures, we're talking about a workshop, a business meeting, or both. And then, there was one other thing, and I apologize. Sorry, I had a lot of notes, a lot of them were already taken care of, though, so I want to make sure I don't repeat anything. Oh, for the consent agenda, I know we had previously, and this was a while ago, probably closer to when my tenure began, we had discussed putting a money cap on items that were on the consent agenda. I had made that suggestion because I felt like if, if there were contracts that hit a certain dollar amount, they should not be thrown into the consent agenda. And my only concern with that is, as we look to financial transparency with our residents, I don't want it to seem like we're just throwing things in, into the consent agenda, when some of those items have a pretty hefty price tag. It doesn't mean that staff needs to do a whole, you know, dissertation on a contract, and presentation on a contract, but at the very least, that department head, let's say, and I'm just throwing out a number, I would look to you all to help me with regards to what you think that cap would be. But, you know, let's say that there's a, a contract for, you know, pavement, a pavement improvement somewhere, that's $500,000. You know, staff can just come forward, and it can be a five-minute, hey, this is the, this is the contractor we've hired, this is the amount, and this is what it's going to improve, it doesn't need to be a whole presentation, but I think there should be a dollar cap amount on what hits the consent agenda.
Any thoughts on, on that recommendation?
Oh, yeah, I agree with the, with the premise that transparency and, and having those kind of individualized would be good. Have no idea on what that number should be, I don't know if there's similar provisions in other city charters, or things like that, that we can look to, to see what, what that benchmark is, that other cities are using.
Just as a, Ms. Pontieri has brought this up previously, and the way we've been structuring the agenda, I'd say the last couple of months is non-curs, non-controversial items, and anything less than a million dollars, is what we've been, it's how the agenda's been structured the last couple of months.
So that's just by your policy versus?
Correct. What's written in your policies, yes.
Yeah, so if we can get that written in, I think that would just be better, that way, you know, future council, because again, we're, we're sitting here now, we may agree to that, but if we can include that as, as a written policy, I think that's the, that's the prudent way to move forward.
Councilman Stevens?
Well, I, I'm a little confused. We, if, if we set a limit at, at a million dollars, does that mean that staff can approve a project that's up to a million dollars?
No, that's not what that means. It just means that, instead of it being on the consent agenda, that it would be on resolutions, so it would be another item in your resolution agenda as opposed to the consent. Because the consent agenda is read all at once, whereas resolutions are individually read.
Okay, I get it. And that doesn't preclude you from asking a question on an item that's on the consent agenda? Any of us could do that.
And additionally, we can pull something from consent.
Correct.
To an agenda item as well.
Correct.
And Mr. Gambaro, I did research, so, yeah, the policy and procedures would be adopted as a resolution.
As a resolution, okay, great, thank you. Vice mayor, anything else?
Just one last thing, if we look at section four of the policies and procedures of presiding officer, and you go down to subsection A5, it states that the mayor is to decide questions of order, I don't think that that's proper. In our policies and procedures, it explicitly states that the attorney is the parliamentarian, therefore, it's my position that we should take that subjectivity out of one council member's hands, and put it with the parliamentarian, allowing the parliamentarian to decide questions of order.
I agree with that.
Councilman Stevens?
And in his absence, who would, who would take that responsibility?
You would always have a attorney sitting here. I would, I would be, the only time it would be is probably maybe a budget meeting, that the attorney was not present, and usually, those are worked out ahead of time.
Okay. Okay, vice mayor, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, okay.
I just had a question about, I know you mentioned that we have case law now for, I, I think it's section 5F, oh, I'm sorry, circled the wrong one, that's what we just discussed. But in any case, addressing the, the mayor directly, so we have this, and that trumps this, but should we make this conform with, with that finding?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, that's, that was, I didn't clarify that, and thank you for bringing that up, I will make that change.
That change will be included, okay.
Yeah, that will also be part of the change as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilman Stevens? Okay. The only thing I just, I'd like to add is that I had the opportunity to sit down and speak with our new state representative, Sam Greco, yesterday, I know others will be meeting with him here later this week, but I think that he, he kind of painted a very realistic picture of that there's, the state doesn't have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem, and, and the focus of the, the incoming leadership is to kind of rein in some of that spending. So, you know, as we discussed in our last meeting, it's important to pick the top one or two projects, and move out from there. And then I'll also be meeting with my college classmate, Jason Broder, who's just appointed President Pro Tempore of the Senate, to advocate on, on our priorities that we agreed to last week. But that's it. City Attorney?
We got one more public comment.
Oh, sorry.
So, just as the last non-agenda public comment.
Okay. Any public comment? None? Okay, I'll close public comment, and everybody, we've gone around the horn, so, Ms., Ms. Pontieri.
I don't have anything further, I just want to make sure we don't skip city manager as well.
Okay, so I've got here city attorney, any comments?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Okay, city manager?
Yes, we've got the upcoming Starlight Parade this weekend, on Saturday, it's going to be a wonderful and fabulous event. Thank you all for joining us yesterday for our strategic retreat, and heard a lot of good conversation and direction that we can take for our strategic planning in January and through March, so that concludes my comments, sir.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Your second? Call's in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.